Here.
Scott?
Here.
Capron?
Here.
Gretkin?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Oh, I better see where I'm at here. Hang on, I'm sorry.
Second.
Make it a... Or disadvantaged position of the city in that litigation.
Second. Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Raddick?
Aye. I make a motion we go into closed session, City Council discuss purchase or sale of a particular real estate where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the city would have to pay for that property, reduce the price the city would receive for that property.
Second.
Second.
Capron?
He really wanted that one.
Aye.
Gretkin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Raddick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Should I go for three? Bob, I know things are tough over at the old, uh... The old convention center, but, uh... They can't mail my bills anymore. They have to hand-deliver them like I'm a deadbeat to the council, or how's...
Not, Bob.
You just... Sitting over there?
It only slowed up their pay 'cause they...
Aye.
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Braddock?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. I move adjourn the closed session. Second?
Brecken?
Aye.
More?
Aye.
Braddock?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Caper?
Aye.
Caper?
Aye.
Here.
Here.
More?
Here.
Braddock?
Here.
Scott?
Here. Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Okay, we are going to go to interviews. Alex Waters for the Event Facilities Advisory Board. There you are. Wherever it's easiest for you, Alex.
Wherever you want me.
I don't care.
Is this one live? Does that work?
Yes, that will work.
Tell us why you want to serve and a little bit about yourself and...
All right, well, I just have a lot of free time, as you guys know. No, I'm just kidding, just kidding. I'm just looking for really another opportunity to serve the community that's given so much to me. I think this is a great opportunity, a great board. I'm looking for opportunities to give young professionals more of a voice. I've been pretty well engaged with those communities. I serve on the board of both the Young Professionals of Iowa as well as the Sioux City Growth Organization. And I think that that voice is critical, especially when we look at some of the venues that we're looking to promote here in Suland. And would love the opportunity to be that voice.
Very well stated.
Thanks. Thanks for making that... Sort of sweet to the point.
We have a lot of people that want to serve on this. I got to pull it up real quick here.
Okay.
Five total.
Five total and two openings. And is this not happy gender balanced?
No, it's not gender balanced.
Okay. I want to get everything clarified so...
No, you're good. What about the wheelchair slide? Is there anyone else in a wheelchair on there?
No.
Figured I got a corner on that market.
Alex, you got any ideas for improvements?
Well, you know, I've been thinking a lot about that, especially since I decided that I wanted to apply. And a couple of things that I've noticed, especially with the young professional demographic or the younger age groups. Number one is, I really would like to do a bigger push on social media advertising. I think that's a really big fix. They're really getting away from Facebook as older demographics are using it. So I think Instagram and Twitter, places like that are really becoming a little more active. I understand that we have pages representing some of those things and I follow them. I just think we could be more active on those accounts. And then the second thing that I really think a lot about, and maybe it's because I work at Morningside College and I've been there, but I really could see a better partnership with the colleges and making sure that those students, especially those students that come internationally or from across the country to go to school there, really trying to get them to attend some of those events. I think that it's a shame when I talk to seniors that are going to be graduating that have never been to an event at the Orpheum. I think that's a travesty. And so I think if there's an opportunity for more engagement from the schools, that's something that I would look into for sure.
Terrific. Thanks, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
I'd like to see you on the board. I tell you, we need young, innovative people. And I think that you would be a great asset to the board, so...
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so I appreciate you coming up and...
What do you think about a board of 11 members, though? After going there last week, God help me, I suppose there's a few of them in here, but what do you think about a board with 11 members? I found it to be somewhat more than I would be used to. Is that a workable board?
I would say that sometimes you can run into too many cooks in the kitchen kind of type of thing, or maybe the loudest voice is the one that we just all follow. But I'd like to think that, especially with my background and my degree in negotiation and dispute resolution, maybe that that can help kind of mediate some of those conversations. But I do think it poses a lot of challenges, that's for sure. I mean, the two boards that I'm the most active on, the YPI Iowa as well as the Sioux City Growth Organization, we have executives that serve and are voting members, but then we also have chairs of different committees that give input, but maybe aren't the voting members. So sometimes that's an easier route to go. I think that it poses challenges, but hey, that's the decision you guys make. I just want to serve on it.
That's a good answer.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate your time.
Thanks, Alex.
Jim Anderson, James Anderson, wherever you want to go. Should be James. All right. Tell us, this will be your second term, correct?
Yes. Actually, I had part of an unexpired term and then a first term, and this would be my second term.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
I just, I thought you wanted a young, energetic... Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. An older, experienced person. I get so confused. No, I have been continuing to serve. I enjoy it. I'm one of the more experienced ones on the board. And the other thing is, is I've supervised one master's of social work student a couple of years ago, and we're going to have another one that's going to be joining us who is also going to work with the homeless population, which serves also another committee that I'm on, the Warming Shelter. So things fit into each other so that we can get some better information and some more direction for that continued problem.
Questions?
You certainly have participated in the meetings, and when we have our joint meeting with your commission, you always have
Yes.
good input, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How many hundreds is that now, Lisa? How many do we have applying?
How many applications?
Yeah.
And?
I know that for gender balance, we needed a male, so... I don't know how many others are being interviewed for this.
How many openings? We have nine applicants and four...
Gender balance is hard. Now, or two and two.
Gotcha. Well, you're in the running. You're one of those, right?
A little slower as age creeps up, but you're still in the running.
Thanks, Jim.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We will go on to the consent agenda, which is unanimous, unless a separate roll call vote is asked for by a council member. If you want to speak... If you want to speak on any of these items, come up as I read them, state your name and address, please. If you want to speak on something not on the agenda, please come up at the end on their council or on their citizen concerns and state your name and address again for the record. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is a reading of the City Council minutes of June 20th, 2016. Four is a motion acknowledging the Board of Adjustment actions of June 14th, 2016. Five is a resolution authorizing the city contribution of 60,000 to the Miracle League of Sioux City in connection with the splash pad construction at the Miracle Field. Six is a resolution adopting plan specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Bridgeport West Improvements project staff will ask for deletion or deferral per Glenn Ellis. Mr. Ellis, what is it, a deferral or is it a deletion?
Glenn Ellis sitting here, we're asking for a deletion at this time.
I'll move that.
Second.
We're waiting on DNR permits and some acquisition at this time.
Okay.
Brecken?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Redding?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capers?
Aye.
Seven is a resolution temporary closing various downtown streets on July 1st, 2016 for the big parade. Is that a little late to be having that this late? Don't we normally have them sooner than that?
The big parade is the Mardi Gras?
Yeah, but...
Right before Saturday in the fall.
I know when it is, but we normally have these like two or three weeks ahead of time so that people know that.
No.
Yes, we do.
For the street closure.
I thought you meant the parade.
This is not my first time.
I thought you were talking about the parade.
I'm just asking a question. It's not an argument. I'm not trying to start any trouble.
I'm voting against it, that's it.
Don't vote against it.
Yeah, we all know what you're talking about. She's at the parade, oh my god.
Okay. Sorry I asked. We're getting up on the agenda. Let's move forward. Eight's a motion accepting the evaluation, annual evaluation of the museum director. I would, after this, like to make a motion, we quit doing this. I'm the one that wanted it 20 years ago, and now we get them, and sometimes I don't recognize the people, how good they get graded. Not that we have bad people, not that you're a bad director, Mr. Hanson, you do a great job, but it just seems like there's not a lot of forethought into these, so I'd almost get rid of them personally. Leave it to the board to do it. No, we can't make a motion today. Nine's a resolution awarding a purchase order to electric pump for one QC EC model Barracuda 16096 fish cleaning station for parks and rec.
I have a question.
Okay.
On that. Where is this fish cleaning thing going? I'm assuming out to...
Same place has been going since we talked about it, right on the riverfront.
On our river?
Mm-hmm.
Our river, not in Bacon Creek?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Kellybock, Parks Maintenance Field Supervisor. It will be going right off the east edge of the boat ramp. Currently, there's a canoe kayak rack right there, and that's where it will be, right off that east edge of the parking lot.
So how soon will it be installed, then?
I believe delivery date was six to eight weeks for construction and then delivery.
Okay, so I have a question. This is going to be crazy. Are you ready for this? A few years ago, Whit did a study on the fish in the river, and they found that there was heavy metal. The EPA had found limits on it, and the water was tested and treated, I guess. There's heavy metal with some of the fish. Is that still true, or...?
Much anywhere you go.
People are just going to eat them fish out, right out of there, huh?
Well, it's...
It's curious.
Fish are known carriers of heavy metals.
Are they safe?
In the budget, we had 131,000 under this item. Was that the fish cleaning and the restrooms that mobile... Restrooms, lift station, all... I have to put 1,200 feet of force main in. The whole package is going to encompass that money. And this is right next to all that? Right, it's connected.
I'm all for it.
Because they were all separate. How did we end up on budget with that 131? We're going to get very close to expending most all of it. Okay. Because I didn't write down what the restrooms and everything else were when we... I have a sheet that I'm following back in my office. If you'd care...
You email that to us?
I could email it.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Ten, there are actions relating to grants. A is a resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment for Sioux City Municipal Band. B is a resolution authorizing the burn justice assistance grant from the Office of Drug Control Policy for the Tri-State Drug Task Force. C is a resolution accepting the Community Attraction and Tourism Grant Agreement from the Vision Iowa Board in connection with the Cone Park Development Project. Eleven are civil penalties and suspensions. A is a resolution assessing a civil penalty of $500 against Central Mart 800 Hamilton Boulevard for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. B is a resolution assessing a civil penalty of 500 against La Plazita Latina 1300 West 4th Street for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. C is a resolution assessing a civil penalty of 500 against Ray Deoros 1424 Villa for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. D is a resolution accepting a civil penalty of 500 against the Red Room Lounge 1000 West 7th for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. E is a resolution assessing a civil penalty of 500 against Sarge's Mini Mart 2329 West 2nd Street for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. F is a resolution assessing civil penalties against L. Arcarius 2022 Court Street for violation of the Iowa liquor laws. Twelve are actions relating to agreements and contract. A is a resolution approving a contract for transportation services for South Sioux City, Nebraska. B is a motion authorizing negotiations with Bartlett, N. West, and HGR Engineering for the Sioux City wastewater treatment facility resource recovery and beneficial reuse project. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Mark Sims, Utility Director. Just a brief statement here. We're requesting, under this item, the authority to negotiate, as you know, with the top-rated firm, and if that's unsuccessful, the second-rated firm on our biogas project. And we were approached, I think it was in late 2015, early 2016, by two different firms. And in both cases, they felt we had a significant opportunity and a window that was open to be able to reuse the methane, which we would call biogas, and also potentially recover some other byproducts at the wastewater treatment plant. The project is fairly complex, and we do need expertise to be able to accomplish that. And so that's the reason for this request. We did send out RFPs to eight firms and received five back. I think at least three are represented here tonight, including the top-rated firm, if you have questions of them. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm here to...
We should come up with a better acronym than the SCWWTFRRBRT.
We'll work on that. Got any ideas?
I'll come up with one later.
Resource Recovery Facility.
All right, anyone want to be heard? C is a resolution awarding a service provider agreement to long painting and sandblasting to paint and recaulk the Lewis Pool. D is a resolution approving change order number one to Midcontinental Restoration for repointing existing machinery at the Long Lines Family Rec Center and additional brick replacement at the Convention Center in connection with the tuck pointing and exterior repairs 2015 project. E is a resolution awarding a contractor Lazard Contracting for the Bridgeport West Sewer Improvement Section B Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Project and the 2016 Annual Manhole Rehabilitation Project. I need to abstain on that. F is a resolution approving a consulting services agreement with Calhoun Burns and Associates for construction inspection and administration for the 18th Street Bridge Deck Replacement Project. G is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom for underground cable from the intersection of 30th and Jackson Street to private property to parcel located at 3002 Jackson Street. H is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom for underground cable from Sergeant Road and Southern Hills to private property at 4243 Natalia Way. I is a resolution granting a permit for FiberCom for underground cable from 41st Street and Capitol Street to private property at 4106 Van Buren Street. J is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom for underground cable at 1215 South Mulberry to private property at 1212 Morningside Avenue. K is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom for underground cable from West 19... Why? How can Cable 1 go out and put them wherever they want? But these guys all have to do it by permit.
Cable 1 has a franchise through the State Utility Board, which they maintain that they don't have to do a permit for each one. Several of the contractors that you'll see that come in for individual permits do not.
Well, then the state legislature needs to do something about this because we don't know where they're burying it, but at least these guys have to tell us where they're burying it. Well, that doesn't seem fair to me. I mean, I don't know what their deal is, that they have a franchise and the rest of them don't.
The legislature changed, I think it was about six years ago.
Yeah, I know that, because Cable 1 didn't want the city council to have anything to say about them.
Yeah, they did not renew their ordinance.
But they're doing, that would be, I would appreciate that for Cable, but now they're doing the same thing. They're putting fiber down in that too, right?
I think that was looked at at the state level with utilities board. That was one question that they had of them, is what was the nature of what they were putting in for utilities, whether it was strictly cable or if they're branching into different areas.
If we find out they're doing anything else, we should talk about that, then. L is a resolution granting a permit to FiberCom for underground cable from Murray Street and Patton Street to private property at 2228 Murray Street. M is a resolution approving a 2080 agreement with the Sioux City Community School District in connection with the Clark Elementary School Pedestrian Bridge and Storm Sewer Replacement Project.
Mayor, I need to abstain on that item. Conflict of interest.
N is a resolution approving a reimbursement agreement with Mid-American Energy for the underground conversion of power lines on Country Club Boulevard. O is a resolution approving change order number one with Subserco for street lighting in connection with the Northern Valley Crossing Phase 2 Site Improvement Project. I need to abstain on that. Thirteen are actions authorizing issuance of checks. A is a resolution approving a settlement and payment of the Rizdal Torque Claim. B is a resolution approving settlement and payment of the Zen Torque Claim. C is a resolution approving a settlement payment of the Bush Torque Claim. D is a resolution approving settlement and payment of the Lundt Torque Claim. E is a resolution approving change order number one and final payment to DNS Landscape in connection with the Riverside Soccer Fields Reconstruction Project. F is a resolution approving change order number one and final payment to Subserco for the 1700 block Pier Street Emergency Utility Repair Project. Did that have a bond, you know? I'll just abstain, and it's easier. G is a resolution authorizing final payment to ICE for the Gordon Drive Traffic Coordination Project. Fourteen are actions relating to property. A is a resolution proposing to sell property and rescinding all conflicting resolutions in North One Half of the vacated 13th Street abutting 1220 Mulberry Street. B is a resolution inviting proposal of the sale of land in the Greenville Urban Renewal, announcing the intent to accept the proposal of Hans Property Management LLC and setting a hearing. Fifteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Sixteen are applications for beer liquor license. See the list and come forward if you have any questions. Seventeen, receipt of minutes. See the list, come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on the first 17 items, please come forward now. Seeing none, we will vote. Okay, then I need to abstain then. Those items pass 5-0 unless otherwise noted. Eighteen's a hearing and resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract, estimated cost for the Sioux Gateway Airport Elevator Replacement Project. I'll move that.
Second.
What was the usage on the elevator? Five people at the...
Question?
How much usage does the elevator get?
Well, it's used daily, you know, mostly by staff, administrative staff, too, we're on the third floor.
Otherwise, is the second-room conference requirement to have an elevator?
It's probably not required, although the steps as they are right now, I have had to make accommodations for a staff member on the first level to find a spot, because the steps that are as built right now are not very conducive to get up and down. Crazy. They're a winding, very narrow path.
We would have to have an elevator.
Okay.
If you mobballed the upstairs, though, you wouldn't.
If it wasn't accessible to the public or staff, that would be a different situation, yes.
Right. What's it going to cost you?
175 is the estimate.
How much?
175.
175, you could put a nice addition on the side of the building and move all your staff out of that.
Do we have any other open spaces to move staff to?
There is not right now. We found one spot that I made accommodations for one person in a very small area.
175 would build about 1,500 square feet. You don't have 1,500 square feet up there.
Between two floors, there might be that much.
Is all the staff necessary to be at that location?
Well, I don't know where else they would be if we didn't create a space for them.
Yeah, it would be, but how much staff are you talking?
Well, there's four.
You mean more than 400 square feet a person? 350?
Well, there's a conference room area as well.
Yeah.
Right now, they're in cubicles. I mean, it's pretty tight spaces, it's right now.
Well, I bet they don't have 1,500 square feet.
Three cubicles and an office on one floor, the staff are basically at the other floors. The conference room, you've been at for the joint meetings. I guess it's a consideration on looking to...
Even when you get done, it's still not a very good space up there, is my point.
It's not great.
It's hard to...
It's tight as it sits right now. It is.
I'd move that this get deferred for a couple of weeks and...
You want us to investigate opportunities for...
I'm going to withdraw my motion.
You would have federal grant opportunities to expand, wouldn't you?
Not right now. I mean, there isn't any grant funding right now for, this is not a high priority.
Sure.
This is currently scheduled for a hearing today, with the timeline for accepting bids.
The bids are due next Tuesday.
So you just have to defer the bids.
Defer opening the bids, right?
We'd have to, we're coming into a law change right now where our notices are, we have a portion, our notice to bidders is now done on a website, and our notice for the other piece of this is published in the journal. Law changes July 1st. We're currently splitting how this is coming through. If we push it back, we're probably going to look at, we'd have to reissue
The first notice.
notices in order to adequately notify potential bidders. So we can do it. It's just going to change a few things, and we'll have to probably change our publications and so forth.
Is this airport abated bonding, the fund source?
Yes, I believe so. It's bonding. I don't know the type without looking at CIP.
The airport abated.
I think it'd be better off on the first floor somewhere on the north end of the building, personally. I think it'd be money long-term, it'd be a lot better money spent.
Is there any way to ever move the restaurant into where the people sit, too?
You mean as far as being access to the secure area and the open area?
Yeah.
Anything's possible.
I mean, because if you could get your craft service moved into there and then turn that space into office space, to me that would...
You're going to limit the size of that space available for the passengers, then.
Yeah. I've never been in there and seen the place filled up, even with a full flight, so I don't know.
We can look at adding on and see if there's some acceptable secondary choices, but we have not done that as of now.
I think it's worth a week to, you know, 175,000.
Two weeks, probably.
Two weeks. As yet. So nobody's released their bid? No one's seen what...
One company's taken out plans and specs right now.
Okay, so then... So it's just a re-publication is all, right?
Can't we just reject the bids?
Sure.
Well, why do that?
Why make somebody bid if you're gonna reject?
Because then you get to see everyone's bid, everyone's bid's exposed. You just defer it now and move stuff down the road.
Because the deadline is next Tuesday, we would have to. We could still make the Journal deadline, I believe, in order to put a new notice.
You can't reject them and just leave the bids sealed?
There's no bids yet.
No, but I mean, when they come, leave them sealed?
Amber Higerty, Assistant City Attorney, that would be my suggestion, would be just to hold the hearing today. And when the bids come, if council decides that they don't want to pursue this project, we would be allowed to reject the bids outright and to take another course of action, and that way we wouldn't have to re-advertise or, or re-notify the bidders of a new bid date.
So we just wouldn't open those bids?
We wouldn't have to open them.
Yep.
At all, or if you opened them and decided the cost was prohibitive at that time, even beyond the estimate, council could make the decision to reject the bids at that time. Either or.
Yeah, my only problem, and it's probably not a big deal to bid an elevator, but, you know, you're asking people to spend money.
It's significant, in this case, they're gonna have, it is significant. I mean, we had people attend the, the pre-bid meeting and they're gonna have to have a general involved in the bid process as well because there's a, a new room with code that has to go in, so it's not just the elevator company as well.
No, I don't think that's fair personally, but we're up to the council. I would just put it off for two weeks and then nobody's spent any money bidding it.
We could just re.
What are we asking though for two weeks? I mean, to look at all alternatives and options of taking the upper floors out and expanding.
Yeah, yeah, as the council's direction, the potential we'd mothball those floors then, is that.
Be what I would do. I would have mothballed them a hundred years ago, they're worthless.
If you still wanna do an airport board meeting, I mean, as long as everyone's capable of using the stairs, I mean, that's.
Look, if they, if you had enough room, you'd build a conference room where you could do it downstairs.
Well, quite frankly, you know, when those meetings are held sometimes, there's nobody at the airport. You could just set up a table and, I mean, seriously, pull the table out, put it back.
Did the airport board look at this proposal too? Was this before them?
They did, they approved a recommendation to council.
I just think you need longer than two weeks to look at the options we're talking about.
Yeah, I don't know, to get estimates on what that would be and, you know, come up with a location on what that might be. I don't know if two weeks, you know, we can see what we can come back with in two weeks.
We've got the holiday in there too, so, you know, that's gonna, this time it's gonna be two weeks, if you think about it, so.
The airport board meeting is, the next meeting is the fourteenth.
The fourteenth, so. We'd want a chance to discuss it with them as well.
Well, is there that.
Then I'll move, we delete it, you start over anyway. I'll just move you to delete it.
Delete it would be the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
It'd be deleted and if the same set of plans and specs want to come back, we would have to go back and adopt again.
Right.
And just start the process from the beginning.
We will. Okay. All right, we'll come back, let you know when we find out.
Well, it may not pass her, I don't know.
I second it.
Yeah. Yeah, he's seconding it.
You, you'll.
I second it.
I mean, you're gonna do it to the extent, Mike, where you're gonna have cost estimates of what alternatives are and what it's.
I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to engage somebody to give us.
Talking about taking out the upper floors?
No, just not use.
Just not use them basically, and just add on to the first level is, I think, the direction.
More than one floor up there isn't being used now.
What's that?
Isn't there some floors that aren't being used now? It's part of the old tower, you take all the others down.
They took all the other floors off, yeah.
How many floors are there?
There's two above.
That's what I thought, so you.
There's a basement, there's a basement, all there goes to the basement, the main level and two floors.
Yeah, but to what extent you mothball those and.
I just don't think that many other businesses out there would pay a hundred and seventy grand to build an elevator for four staff members, essentially.
No, it's for the public though, Keith, as well.
Nobody, the public doesn't use it.
But with me.
The second floor, so we would have to have accessible.
They had public meetings held there.
And our lesses do go in and out.
And you have to give access, you can't require everybody to take those narrow stairs. Don't you have, you come up with a good alternative to the hundred and seventy-five thousand? I think there's more to it than that, and I'm, I'm not excited about leaving a second, third floor vacant anyway. I mean, it's just, well, unless you just really take, you're not gonna have water problems, you're not gonna have.
Yeah, I'm not sure off the top of my head to the footprint on where we would go with, with the building, you know, which direction that makes sense.
Is there a conference room in the basement too that's used? There used to be.
There used, there used to be, I think the board used to meet down there once upon a time.
And others rented it or used it?
I don't know that.
No, I think.
It's not in use by any outside party right now.
Right now, it's not.
Well, I tell you what, I don't even know now if you, if you wanna vote for this, but I'm just saying, if you're gonna spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, you can build a lot of nice office space, even if you have to add on to the building. Two hundred bucks a foot, Stan?
Hundred, two twenty-five.
Well, we're not building it the way you want it. I mean, that's, that's a fair amount of space, and you don't have that much up there, but I don't care. It doesn't matter to me. It just seems like a waste of money for an elevator that not very many people use. That's the reality is.
Well, if we delete it, we investigate it and do a council memo on what we find at that point. Perfect, okay.
Yep. Good for me.
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Call the roll, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Kayburn?
Aye.
Gretchen?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ready?
I do think you'd do better with the, you know, restaurant or sandwich facility inside or accessible after you've gone through security because most people try to get through security and then they end up sitting around for an hour and they don't wanna go back out and come back in to get something.
It is true, I mean, it does create up some other issues with the secure area and whoever operates the kitchen as far as.
They have to go through security themselves.
They do. And those employees, those employees have to be able to pass backgrounds and.
Yeah, half and half, half in and half.
Well, I don't think you can, it'd be nice if you had a window where you could.
What about security?
We're moving ahead. Nineteen is a hearing, we're not redesigning the whole airport today. Reading a hearing on resolution approving plans and specifications, form of contract, estimated cost for the Cone Park Design Project. I'll move it.
Second, that's what I think, that's what's gonna end up happening.
I wanna make a comment on that. This has been a long time coming, Cone Park has, and, and I've been on the, on the committee for quite a long time. And I have to, Matt, you wanna come up here? I just wanna tell Matt thank you for all the hard work that he's put into this because it's, it's been a long, a long road. We have started, we have had all different places that we have looked to try to put Cone Park and just have struggled with it, and now it's finally coming to happen. And the final, well, let's see, I think that we're gonna be putting bids out and July 12th will be the, uh, when we decide on the bid, I believe, is that right?
Yeah.
After that, it's supposed to be done by July 31st.
Two thousand seventeen.
Of two thousand seventeen, so we're looking at next, next winter having our first winter park. And this is huge for Sioux land, not just for Sioux City, so I'm, I'm really, really excited about it. We have a lot of really great amenities that are gonna be part of this and it's gonna be doing wonders for the community, so thank you and, and, and all the community people that have been involved in this. It's been, like I said, it's been a long day coming and we finally did it, so, good job.
Yeah, it's been a great project, we're excited about it. Let's wait till July 12th and see what the bids are, then you can.
Matt, how many tube runs are there gonna be, two?
Well, ten to twelve lanes.
Ten to twelve?
Yeah.
How long you been here now, Matt?
Going on two years.
The honeymoon just continues for you, doesn't it?
Well, having, yeah, having said that, Mayor, I have something to add as well. No, I concur with what Rhonda was saying, but I just wanna make sure, and I'm sorry I keep bringing this up and you keep telling me yes, but we do have a fund for maintenance, so going forward, it will be maintained, it won't be.
We have an operating budget for maintenance, we don't have.
I mean, a really healthy budget.
We don't have an endowment, we do not have an endowment set aside.
It'd be best if we could get an endowment going.
For maintenance and for, and for insurance, for liability. I wanna make sure we have money put away for that because we don't wanna build it.
Right.
And then not maintain it, not insure it. Because is this not, and I, I don't mean to throw cold water on what you said, because I agree with you, but is this not a high risk?
You're not gonna get it for a hundred.
I mean, these are, these are events that are, that can be high risk, where there could be injury, there could be all kinds of liability. You're saying the structure's set up that way, but if the user fees are so high that you can't afford to go there, I, I, in my mind, Bob, and I appreciate that, but in my mind, I can't picture user fees supporting liability insurance.
Well, they do in the private sector.
And maintenance. Because that hasn't worked, I mean, our swimming pools, it hasn't worked. Other amenities we have.
You just gotta have the will to charge eight or nine bucks.
Take a look at. But, but we wanna make it affordable for, for everyone.
It won't get used to eight or nine bucks.
Then we're not very good at business.
All I'm asking is to make sure we put money away for maintenance and for liability insurance. But you have to tell me, I really do, I really, you have to tell me, or the council has to tell me, be quiet about that, we're gonna proceed without it, but I wanna do it with our eyes open, saying we're not gonna have this maintenance or the endowment fund or whatever you wanna call it. We're not gonna have this liability insurance, we're gonna self-insure. I mean, just tell me that upfront or tell me along the way so I can at least deal with it.
The insurance is estimated twelve thousand five hundred per year, and that's included in the operating budget that we've put together for, for the park. Which it's, right now, we've projected as a break even budget for maintenance, insurance and all operating expenses.
It's a break even budget?
Yeah, using fees similar to the IBPI center, so keeping it very affordable.
Which is how much?
Uh, five to seven dollars.
Okay. Because you haven't, we haven't talked about a fee structure at all yet, have we?
No.
It was, during the financial analysis presentation, it was presented, and I think at that time it was like eight or nine dollars, wasn't it?
It's actually thirteen, which is not what we're trying to do. Yeah.
What was thirteen?
It was thirteen is, uh, from the report that was, was created by SEH, they recommended thirteen and.
And that showed a profit and, and Matt worked to come up with a more affordable that still broke even.
Okay. And that's in the operating budget that was presented for FY sixteen.
I just wanna keep that out in front of us and.
Okay.
If that changes, let me know, please.
Yeah.
And that was for two hours' worth of.
Two hours' worth of.
Activity?
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't hear what you said about the fees, I'm sorry.
It'd have to be probably around nine dollars. If you look at what the private sector does.
We're waiting for two votes?
Pass is five zero. Twenty is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of Cornerstone World Outreach for the purchase of land in the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area. Rhonda, did you wanna address this?
Yes, I did. I'm struggling with this, not really too difficult either, but, by the way. I don't think that Cornerstone should own the property, I think that we should keep ownership of, ownership of the property and I propose that we can lease it to them with a long-term lease with stipulations that the only thing that, that can be on the land would be their, their memorial with Haddock. I figured it out, we could lease it for a hundred bucks a month times five years, it'd be six thousand dollars. The land that they, that we're supposedly gonna sell to them is five thousand eighty-seven dollars. After that five-year lease, we could have an option to buy at the time if we so chose. But I think the city needs to have ownership of it. I just wanna make sure that it's gonna be what it's supposed to be for, and that's it. I think we need to be in control of the land.
The action item, the discussion talks about the site will include a monument, a sitting bench and landscaping, and no additional structures or off-premises signage would be allowed on the site. Isn't that what you're asking for? If they enter into an agreement, isn't that?
If that's all they're gonna do, but.
Cleaner to not do that, I mean, it's dedicated as a monument. You also don't wanna treat us any differently than you treat any other institution that ever buys land, that would be unwise. And that sounds very different.
You please identify yourself for the.
Harry Gordon, Senior Pastor, Cornerstone World Outreach, sixteen thirty-one South Paxton.
Thank you.
Aaron Rochester, thirteen oh four forty-sixth Street. And I would agree with him, this is privately raised funds for a monument that's gonna be a betterment for Sioux City in kind of a, a rough area that's out there right now and for it to be, one of the reasons why, of course, it was and, and you could probably attest to this as well, one of the reasons why it's supposed to be a private purchase is.
Is to protect the city from getting a lawsuit because we're memorializing a Christian with a cross and God forbid a Bible verse, you'll get tangled into lawsuit. We're doing this out of the courtesy of our hearts to protect the city and the taxpayers from a silly lawsuit from atheists.
We don't want ACLU.
I don't think that's a response that we ought to be getting, with all due respect.
ACLU has been known to come into cities and, and have lawsuits based on the fact of any kind of a religious figure. This was a pastor.
Because if it's still publicly owned land, it's gonna be seen as a public monument.
Exactly.
That's right, and it's gonna get you in an entanglement that we're trying to help you avoid because we don't wanna see it get frustrated ten or twenty years from now if we become a communist nation. So we're trying to protect it, it's private property, and that's what it ought to be, owned by the church, deeded to the church.
Paid for by the church.
So if it's the regular habit of the city council to babysit property for a period of time before selling it, and that's fair, we could agree to that. But if you've never done that before, I advise the attorney to shut it down. You don't wanna go there.
No, but we have, we have required site plans, that's not out of the ordinary. We have required people to tell us what they're gonna put on it, that's not out of the ordinary.
No, that's been provided, it's been provided.
No, I, I understand you writing it, but I think we have a little conflict because we don't have site plans anymore, Mr. Hanson, so how? I know you are, according to this, it says you are, but, but how is it you can have a site plan? But we don't have site plans.
Sure, Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager, that is correct. They have provided a conceptual site plan which shows what's been described in the report under the discussion item as far as the bench and the sidewalk and the bollards to protect the memorial. The site plan is not a commission and council-approved site plan. It was simply reviewed at the staff level to determine what was gonna be put on the site. As we've done in the past, another opportunity here, if there wanted to be some protection on approving that site plan was to place a deed restriction on the property, when we deed the property, on what it can and cannot be used for. That's been done in the past, and that would formalize what the agreement is that the memorial and the bench would be the only, and landscaping would be the only items placed on the site, and that can be written into the deed.
We'd be happy to accept that as well. Perfectly fine.
I'm willing to move it as is.
We need a second before we can have an amendment, right? I'll second, and I'll my, I'll make an amendment to the motion that, that what you've agreed to is put on the deed. Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
On the amendment?
Yes.
No, I mean, we gotta vote.
Yeah. Would you wanna, don't we wanna hear from?
Well, if there's others to be heard, yeah. Anyone else be heard?
We didn't really expect this to be a hot topic, but.
Well.
Well, it was.
Well, some of us have received emails on it, but I think your willingness to the, to accept the deed restriction, I think addresses.
That's no problem.
Some of that, so that, that's probably where you might hear some, at least a couple of council members coming from is what's been.
There's not much you can do with twenty feet of grass.
Well, actually, there is. That's where I'm coming from.
But if you agree to the deed restriction, but, but I did think there'd be, be some others here to address it one way or the other. I mean.
Sure.
Both pro and con.
For clarification, so we can make sure that everyone is on the same page. It's been amended, or at least moved in second and for an amendment to include a deed restriction. There's a proposed city deed that's attached to the council homework today. We would revise that to indicate that it would be in conformance with the site plan that was voluntarily submitted on behalf of the church, and we would make note of that in the deed. Then the mayor would execute it and it would be upon consideration given, then we would give you the deed for recording. If that, I just wanna make sure.
That's very agreeable and, and kind, I appreciate that.
Anyone else be heard? On the amendment?
Capron?
No.
Breckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Reddick?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
On the regular, we'll vote electronically.
Yes.
Thank you kindly, any other questions? I can help you.
Oh, thank you.
Passes four to one, Capron votes no. Twenty one's a hearing and resolution approving a proposal to sell property and authorizing a city deed part of the vacated East West Alley adjacent to eleven eleven and eleven thirteen Irene Street, I'll move it.
Second?
Passes five zero, recommendations planning and zoning, hearing and ordinance, rezoning twenty seven thirty and twenty eight oh two Castle Gates Drive to zone classification MU, P&amp;Z recommends approval of the rezoning to SC Suburban Commercial.
Council, Jason Gary, Chair Planning and Zoning. All these items you're about to hear today had a significant amount of discussions that went along with them. To give you a quick summary on this one, this is currently, this site is currently zoned NC two, which is more geared towards residential housing than it is towards any sort of commercial or office operation. The petitioner came forward requesting a mixed-use zone. We modified, our recommendation to you is actually suburban commercial zone, we felt was more appropriate, and that passed on a six zero vote, there was a significant number of, there were significant number of citizens who wanted to be heard, and were in opposition to the rezoning.
Okay, I want to establish ground rules, cause I don't know, and I want to make sure. It would appear to me it takes super majority, because so many people have petitioned, is that the case?
That is correct.
So, it'd take four votes. Suburban Commercial on behalf, let me first of all say, so you can all get mad at me right away, I was one of the first four guys into the Whispering Creek, and I remember this to always be commercial. Then, we came along with our great new zoning ordinance, and people didn't realize their land got changed. It's not, this is the second time this has happened in the last three months. Doesn't make any difference, we're here today, but does the petitioner, if he were to build something on that lot, what can he build? And does he have to put the parking out back? Because that parking lot's been there for quite some time.
Well, the, as the petition came forward requesting rezoning of two lots, both the lot that's already currently developed, and then the lot to the north. The, our recommendation to you is that that lot not be rezoned, that that stay in NC two zone, that that not be rezoned, which makes it not very developable. It's very limited likelihood that that could ever be developed into a commercial piece of ground. So, really, we're only recommending that...
No, I'm gonna ask lots of questions here, because I've had calls both sides.
That's fine, I was getting to your answers, though.
Okay, what if a real estate office wanted to go there, on that other lot?
On the existing site, are you talking about the northern lot, or are you talking about the existing? On the, if a northern lot wanted to come forward, I'll defer to Chris as far as the zoning rules go, as to what he would be able to do on an NC two zone, as his rights today, on that northern lot.
Chris Madge, Senior Planner, currently, both lots are zoned NC two, which would only allow for a single-family and duplex developments. That would be the only two uses that would be allowed. The property used to be zoned PDR, under the old code, which was developed by site plan, and that site plan required a council-approved site plan.
I agree, but now, we've downsized a person's property, and I don't understand how that can be, other than it was two parcels. And I'm not telling you I'm for or against anything, it doesn't make any difference where I'm at, I'm gonna listen to the arguments, but it appears that we've downsized the value of a person's property through zoning, which to me, I'm gonna practice law here and be told I'm wrong, but that almost appears to be a taking.
Well, the, part of the reason that the, that we, that the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously voted to do that was for that purpose alone, is that he had, when he purchased the property, there was an expectation that that property would be zoned professional office use. Now, that's not the case, because of site plan. And anytime, when we went through the rezoning process, we had a lot of site plan areas that were site plan-developed. When they now go into a zone, staff and everybody else tried to zone those properly in this case, I don't know that that would be the case in this one. And that's why we wanted, we felt as though we needed to restore some of his rights on this one, but not to the level he wants it.
Could you, can you pull up the general area map? Cause I remember when we developed Whispering Creek, those lots on both sides of the street were going to be commercial.
Yeah, and that was back in like November of two thousand and three, our report showed, and yeah, I remember that same thing, that that area was supposed to be kind of professional office space.
Exactly. A credit union could have gone there, a doctor's office could have gone there, it was always laid out that way.
Yeah, now, if, based on our recommendation, if you follow our recommendation versus the petitioner's request, he would, the existing site that has the building on it would be grandfathered in, and he would be able to sell his property, and the standard uses of suburban commercial would be able to go along with that. But if you were to ever want to significantly redevelop that particular property, or do anything else like that, then he would, then he would potentially lose those same grandfathered rights.
So, how do we have the legal right to rewrite our zoning law, and then change this person's...
Because we're no longer, and we've seen this, we have seen this, and Mayor is correct. We operated by site plan for many years, and to, for all the criticism about the zoning code, when you're attempting to go through and match up rights that a site plan had versus what is now, now we no longer do site plans, and we try to match up the rights as best we can through the zoning process for the entire city, there are some situations where it didn't match up exactly as you would expect. So, we bumped into that before, but whenever we're trying to deal with these site plan zone properties, that was always the trick, gonna be the tricky part of the deal.
But how do you take an existing office and make it residential, that's my problem. We don't have the right to do that, in my opinion. You have limited, because if these guys vote no on this today, for whatever reason they vote no, he's back to where he's got a piece of property now, that if he sells it, what's he gonna sell it for? Is he always gonna be grandfathered in? Or if it sits for a year, he's out of luck, he can not be in office again. When everybody on the street can have problems with the second lot, but they all knew when they bought in here, that this was a business. And I'm not taking shots at neighbors, I'm not taking shots at the petitioner, I'm taking shots at the zoning ordinance that I see some flaws in now. That bothers the heck out of me, that we have basically taken property rights away from an individual through zoning.
Mayor?
This isn't the only one, either.
No, this is not the first time.
Did that winery on Villa ever get changed, or?
No, I don't think it did.
So, that's still...
When we went through the zoning process, there were parcels that we rezoned, that there may have been some that added options for them, and more things that they could do. There were some that were less.
Well, we have an obligation the next time, and I won't be here, hopefully you won't do it again for a long time, because this is what you get. To go to those people that you cut their zoning on, like Mr. Steve here, and say, you know what, you've lost some rights here, and you should, to tell him, oh, we did this a year and a half ago, and you should have paid attention, like anybody did, are you kidding me? That's not a good enough excuse, and that's what he's been told. How do you, how would you feel if you were, how would you feel?
I could understand exactly your point, but I would also...
I can tell you, my point is, I would be suing the city for a take... Let me, before that, Mayor, can you point out the two lots we're talking about, what the prior, what the prior, hang on a minute. What the prior zoning was, and what it is today, and what you're recommending which lots be changed?
The two lots in green are the two in question that are being requested to be rezoned. The nineteen seventy-six zoning code had these two properties, as well as the entirety of Castle's Gate Drive was zoned PDR, which was a site plan residential zone, it had no uses were allowed within that zone, it was all by site plan. Only the southern lot ever received site plan approval, and that site plan, the concept plan, showed office uses. The purpose of the rezoning today is, there's intended hair salon to go in the existing building. That use was never listed on the original site plan, it's not allowed in the current zoning district.
Was it under the old zoning?
No.
Okay, that's fine.
It was with a site plan approval, though.
Site plan approval could have changed that original site plan, and added that list to the allowed uses on the site.
And what was the second lot, then, what was it zoned?
It was also zoned PDR.
Right, so he had the right to develop that commercially.
With a site plan.
With a site plan, of course, I don't have a problem with a site plan. I mean, I wasn't necessarily in some neighborhoods ever opposed to site plans, I think we got stupid on some of them, but they were good. Well, the site plan wouldn't be automatic, though, would it, Mayor? On that it is, it was a PDR, you had to put a site plan on those properties. But I mean, the site plan itself might not have been approved.
It would still have to go through planning and zoning and everything.
Parking and setback, and... Right.
This is a zoning map of the entire area, again, the entirety of Castle's Gate was zoned to NC two, which is what we determined to be the equivalent zone. We did rezone in April, this property across the street to mixed use. At the time, it was intended to be commercial and bank-type uses on that site, so that was rezoned to mixed use from NC two.
So, the property across the street essentially is already what this is looking to become?
Correct, yep, since, in April of this year, that we changed that zoning designation.
Yeah, so it made sense that the petitioner would request what is across the street from him. But based on the uses, that's where the, that's where the Planning and Zoning Commission comes in with a different take. We feel like this is much more of a suburban commercial use under the current zoning code, which is a little more restrictive than a mixed use is, and we agree with your point, which is why we recommended what we did.
My problem is what you've done to him on his first site, it seems to me you've downzoned him. Can you go back to that map again? So, the existing, what I'm trying to, I think I'm trying to make a point, maybe not. But, so the existing buildings on the southern lot? Correct. How did that building get there, under which zoning?
PD.
Was that under, was that under the PDR?
Under the PDR, a site plan was approved for that.
Been there a long time. And so, there's no, there are no setbacks on that, no setback requirements on the site?
It was approved by site plan.
Yeah, it was, that's it, it was approved by a site plan.
It was approved by a site plan.
Dan, in that site plan approval, everything was reviewed from parking to setbacks. Nothing can be changed on that building without an amended site plan or a zoning change at this point.
And that's what you're recommending today on that existing building?
No, what we're recommending is, is that since site plans are no longer used inside the zoning code at all, we don't, we're not, we're no longer going through and micromanaging sites, and telling developers each and everything they need to do. We're now focused on the zones themselves, and making those, making that the primary, and making those zones the primary enforcer of setbacks and those sorts of things. We're recommending suburban commercial, which is a more restrictive zone, which doesn't allow for as much as a mixed-use zone, where he could have, for instance, I believe one of the ones in a mixed-use zone is that you could theoretically have a convenience store with, without gas pumps, well, that doesn't really fit.
That what's across the street?
Yeah, it doesn't fit what's in this area right now, suburban commercial use does, which drives towards professional office use, dentist office, insurance office, those sorts of things, which I think keeps to the heart of what the site plan was designed to do for this area.
But who owns the property across the street?
It's a southern lot, you're talking, your recommendation's just on that?
Yeah, just on the southern lot, the northern lot, we're recommending leave NC two, which would not allow for much development beyond residential.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Interesting note, this is the, on the site, and again, apartment and commercial uses on the west side as well. But again, the actual site plan that was approved was only the southern of those two lots.
When the entire development was done, this was known that the southern end would be commercial, or?
Correct.
It was what, I think it was one of the first buildings built out there.
What's that?
I think that southern building was one of the first buildings that was built out there.
Really?
Is it kind of similar to what we're going through now on the other development, the Peterson Land, where upfront, a portion of that is supposed to be commercial?
You're talking about the Eagle Ridge development?
Yes, the Eagle Ridge.
Yeah, yes, yes, where the front part of it is kind of like a, yeah, professional office, or maybe a multifamily use, and then as you get further back...
Well, they even suggested maybe a gas station towards the entrance, did they not? I thought they...
I don't...
It is zoned commercial on a portion fronting on Highway one forty-one. That's where the minimum assessment agreement's tied to.
Right. Any other questions, the council?
Yeah, I got some questions, I guess. So, let's hear from you first.
Jeremy St, six fourteen Pierce Street, I'm the attorney for the Castle's Gate Homeowners Association. They've asked me to represent them here in opposition to the proposed zoning change, and any changes that essentially would expand commercial uses in the area. As we've already pointed out, the association and several other property owners in the area have signed a formal protest, which is why the supermajority vote applies here. You know, while recognizing that one lot is currently used for commercial purposes, we believe that expanding the commercial uses in this area is incompatible with the properties in the immediate vicinity. And I mean, right now, as it's currently developed, you've got the one, the one commercial use, but all the other parcels in the vicinity are residential, golf course, open space, you know, we're talking about a quiet suburban neighborhood. And, you know, quite frankly, these property owners have paid a premium to get the relative tranquility of that neighborhood, and they're looking to get away from as much commercial activity as possible, and so, any changes that would allow for an expansion of commercial uses in this area is gonna be, you know, defeating the reasonable expectations of these property owners at this time. And, you know, keep in mind, we're not talking about an old neighborhood where uses are shifting, and we're also, we're not talking about, you know, a new urbanist neighborhood where a significant amount of mixed use was contemplated from the beginning. We're talking about new homes in a traditional suburban neighborhood with very limited commercial activity, and that's what the homeowners association is looking to preserve here.
Okay, so here's my question. When you drive in there, it's gonna be commercial, right? It's way far away from the house.
Well, the...
So, they're not, I mean, what he's gonna be doing is not gonna be disrupting their neighborhoods.
It could be additional traffic, additional parking.
But the traffic's not going down that far, he's gonna have parking lot, you know, he's gonna, it's...
But if the northern lot is rezoned, then there's, you lose the buffer. Currently, there's a buffer between the existing commercial building, you've got that empty lot with just a little parking on it. And so, if the rezon goes through for the northern lot, then that's gonna put commercial right up against, right up against the houses there.
Is the owner here?
The owner can buy in lots legally?
Maybe he should come up and stand up for himself.
That would require a repl.
I, you know, I guess I kind of have a problem with the fact that if it was zoned for commercial to begin with, and he did exactly what he thought, and now all of a sudden we're changing it up again, I guess I don't get that. That's the part I don't understand, so state your name and...
Steve Venn, at four sixteen Fortieth Street, Sioux City, Iowa. I guess just to kind of give a timeline of how I got into the property to begin with, I think that, from what I'm understanding, is in two thousand and three, there was a concept plan put together by the city planning and zoning, that was used to identify. In two thousand and five, I was looking at getting out of my current rental, renting a space and buying and purchasing some land to build. I was approached by Todd Sap from BMT about that land down there, and he was encouraging me to go down there with a commercial building, and kind of, I wouldn't say anchor the area, but to have some stipulations that he had to approve the building, so that would fit into the community, and it would look nice, and not look commercial, if you will, and I think we accomplished that. I had first right of refusal on the lot north of that, at that time I did not purchase it. I started, I built the current building in two thousand and six, and at that time with the PDR, my site plan, in which I have a copy of, and I don't know if the planning and zoning has something that they could put up, but it did show the lot next to it that I have not built on, it did show a parking lot on a future building site. Again, that was just future look, so my plans all along were to have something in there, and that shows on the site plan that was, I think, put in two thousand and six. Unbeknownst to me, March of two thousand and fifteen, it was rezoned NC two, and that was put in the paper. I did not receive any notification, therefore I had no opportunity to oppose that, or at least I didn't read the paper, so maybe shame on me. But now, for me to rezon it back, the neighbors all got letters to... But now for me to rezon it back, the neighbors all got letters to tell them that they could oppose it, and here I am, having to try to get it back to basically where it was before. And I suppose now that I had a commercial building, my understanding from the zoning and planning was that they grandfathered my current building in because it's a commercial building. I'm paying commercial taxes, which are pretty hefty, I would say, but, you know, again, I love the area and it's worth it to me. I purchased the other lot several years later, prior to the rezoning, with the hopes of having some additional parking and hopefully be able to have another investment and putting another commercial building in. Now, Todd Sapp and I, and I don't know if you're familiar with him, I think he's a very upstanding guy. He was actually thinking about putting in my building like a welcome center for his development and a real estate, and that kind of decided not to do that. So I had it on the P D R, I had it zoned just for medical building at that time with the assumption that I could change it as long as I brought it up in front of the city to some other light commercial, if you will.
Steve, I'm not trying to rush you, but we are going to adhere to a three-minute rule, and I didn't tell you that when you started, so if you can...
So I guess my concern then, and I think the opposition had some thoughts, but when I talked to the zoning and planning, they recommended I go after an M U listing, which I think their concern is that's going to allow for bigger commercial stuff, and I understand that, I agree with that. The trouble with the suburban is it limits me from a parking lot standpoint, so I think I would have to go in front of another committee to get them to grandfather my current parking lot because I think it's supposed to be on the other side of the building. I also would like to have...my understanding, when I looked at the minutes from the hearing that I was at for the zoning, is they did not say that they didn't...they wanted to wait at a later date to rezon that other lot. They did not say they were not going to rezon it. The minutes showed to me that at this time, they were not going to recommend rezoning it. So I did not get that firm, it will never be rezoned, that I was hearing here today. So my other concern is that I think all the neighbors, I think ninety percent of them plus that filed that are opposing me have already... They were already...my building was already there, so they knew there was commercial, so I think that that should hold some weight, that all those lots were, that a lot across the street's mixed use, and it just got rezoned, I think, a month after the rezoning took place, and maybe I should have done it back then before this all got into an uproar. But again, I think it would cause some financial issues for me. It would limit my parking because one of the reasons I got that is when I had more practitioners in my practice, I had to have more parking. I do not have as many practitioners, nor do I plan on having more, but I had to have that parking because I have to have so much parking per medical practitioner in my office, so that's why we had added the other lot has parking on it. And I don't know where that leaves me with that at this time, if it does not get rezoned. So I agree, I think we pushed for the mixed use, but I think the suburban commercial makes more sense to the property owners next to me so that it would limit me, which I'm okay with, and I was okay with P D R and coming before you to get an okay on anything else I was having. So I'm not opposed to that, but I do think that the N C two greatly limits my ability to existing practice at a point where I can, you know, continue to grow and profit, so.
Okay, questions?
I have a question for you, and I'm sorry we didn't have a chance to speak, but was there anything that you haven't said that we might have...that would have helped with the information?
You know, I had a bunch of other things, but I don't want to...and I don't know if I have a chance to rebuff, which I am the first building in there. I don't think we have a huge amount of traffic. I don't think the suburban commercial would increase it that much. And the parking, I don't think it's an issue. I mean, right now, if I could fill my parking lot with my business and with the business that's planted and going in there right now, I think we'd both be happy because I'd be making a lot more money than I am now. I'm not filling my parking lot right now.
You haven't designed the building on the north parking lot, then, have you?
I have not designed it. It was on the original site plan. It's just to show where it would go and where the parking lot would go, so there was plans of developing that later, and that's the presumption I had. And I guess my thing is that the property owners have reasonable expectations, and I guess when I moved in and when it was under P D R, I had reasonable expectations when I bought both lots that I would be able to build commercially on those. So I think that was reasonable, given that zoning at the time. And now with the N C two, obviously, that does not allow me any room to budge, and I think it would definitely limit my practice.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's just one comment I wanted to make in response, as far as that northern site. It wasn't that we...it was that since there's no...at the planning commission level, since there was no development contemplated in the near future, we felt no urgency to want to have to address that zoning. We felt as though if he wants to come back and rezon and expand and do another commercial site, should go through this process again, have that reviewed, and if the council wants it.
How did we get here today, then?
We got here there because his initial request was to rezon the entire site, both lots, to mixed use. That's what he requested. We reviewed it, we modified that...we made a recommendation. His application stands, but we're recommending something different.
What's in front of you today is still for both lots, so if you wanted to reduce that, you would have to make that motion.
Yeah, I guess I'm looking at getting both rezoned. At this time, I think we're kicking it down the road. I don't think the arguments are going to change. Next time I come, I'm going to have to pay three hundred and fifty dollars more again to rezon something and have to, you know, go to the committee hearing first, then come here again, and I think it'd be somewhat redundant. And I'd like to get it handled today, if possible, but...
You know, as I understand it, as I understand the arguments that I've seen, and I hope to hear from everyone today, but I think it works both ways. I think if I were living out there in the residential part, I would think that there would be no commercial development between what you have now and that space. I would think that was some kind of a built-in buffer, and it might have been a wide buffer, but nevertheless, you know, there weren't expectations that it would be built. On the other hand, you're saying it's always been in the plans. It was shown in the preliminary plans. It shows a building there. And as a resident, I'd be concerned about, is your setback going to be far enough back? Will the parking be far enough away that it's not right in my side yard as a resident?
Yeah, and I guess my thing is, it would be up to planning and zoning. I'd have to follow their guidelines, so I would keep it within that as I planned from the beginning.
But I think that really the catch twenty-two is, can you get it pulled back far enough that you're still going to have a nice buffer between what people thought it was for the time they've been there and for what you're proposing?
I appreciate that.
You don't have to answer that. It's just a concept.
I guess my...you know, and I agree, but my concern is, is why is it my land and my money creating the buffer? And they have...I mean, their land is right on the edge of where they can build, and then all of a sudden I have to be the buffer for them, and I don't think that's necessarily fair either. And I agree that I want it to be amicable, and I want to make it look aesthetically appealing, the building itself.
Well, you want to be a good neighbor, but I think that gets into the argument about residential versus commercial, and that's why the buffer comes into play, but...
Yeah, but I guess the concept in two thousand and three was the known fact that there's going to be some commercial there, I guess, and everybody, whether they do it or not, I guess I didn't get the benefit of opposing at my time in two thousand and fifteen, so...but thank you.
Okay, so here's my other question. How much land is commercial out there besides his? Is there anything else?
Chris can pull it up on the line.
Yeah, Chris can pull it up.
Okay, but it's not developed, right?
No, well, it depends on how far away you want to go from their particular street.
Okay, so we're going to be in the same position, then, are you?
So what is it on the west side of the street, that vacant lot now?
It's what he wants to change.
Property located right here, somewhat southwest of the current site, is zoned mixed use.
What's the next one?
The next one to the north is zoned N C two.
That's a what?
It's zoned what?
N C two.
N C two, neighborhood conservation.
Which allows for condos.
So mixed use, what's that allowed for?
There's a plan to put another three-unit.
What's that?
I believe there's plans to allow for some commercial uses.
So you're having commercial all around here, but now you don't want him to? Am I missing something here?
Well, are you talking about our recommendation?
Yeah.
Our recommendation is not...our recommendation does allow him to operate commercially. The northern lot would stay residential as a buffer yard until such time he wants to develop it, and if he wants to come back and go through the process and rezon that, that's fine. The southern portion would be suburban commercial from N C two now. That's our recommendation. So it would allow him to operate a commercial, professional office like he is today with those full rights, but it would also respect that the fact that it's not going to be...it couldn't be changed at a later date to a much more heavy-traffic type of use, and it kind of keeps, in our view, in the short summary of it, the Planning and Zoning Commission felt as though suburban, our recommendation, would effectively make him whole but also address the neighbors' concerns as best as can be done in this situation. That was our feeling anyways.
Go back to that map. What was the land to the north of the brown there before?
Prior to the new code, it was zoned P D R. The entirety of Castle's Gate Drive.
That's my whole point. And it's going to take eighty percent to pass here, so it probably doesn't have a prayer, and I am sympathetic to the neighbors as I am to him. My problem is with the zoning ordinance today. Because a guy that was there from day one of the golf course, and I was there day one when we laid the golf course out, Todd Sapp, Larry Book, Larry Franzen and I, you can get mad at us, those were designed to be commercial lots, not heavily used, accountant's office, credit unions, the whole thing was there. And then we come along with this great new zoning ordinance that's going to be a cure-all, and we basically didn't cure anything but create problems, and you're telling me, well, the guy should have paid attention. Would you have?
I didn't...those words did not come out of my mouth, that he should have paid attention.
Would you have paid attention? If you had the expectation, had a site plan before, would you have had the expectation? The answer is no, and that's my problem. And most of the neighbors out there had to know that there's a potential for an office because there's already one there. He was one of the first guys out there, I remember.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat as you are. We feel as though our recommendation does remedy both parties as effectively as you can.
Although it's really unfair to him who already had the zoning.
If you...
Even on the, you know, the north lot.
If you want to go ahead, I mean, ultimately, we make recommendations, you make decisions. If you want to rezon it to M U, that's your decision. I mean, that, you know, and that would be exactly what he's asking for. My only argument on the other side is that, since it was a site plan anyways,
Sure.
he would have had to come forward if he was going to redevelop that lot to the north further, as I understand it.
Absolutely.
He was going to have to come back through a process anyways to redo the site plan if he wanted to expand to the north. And so he would have had to go through some process. He may very well face the same amount of ire from the neighbors to the north that he would today, and maybe, or maybe not, that site plan would have passed council. That's how we viewed it.
Yep.
It just makes sense to me to do it all at one time, and why would he have to pay another three hundred and fifty bucks when we can get it all done? And he's not saying that he's going to make a mess out of the property, for God's sake. You know, he wants to work with the neighbors, and I'm sure that the neighbors would like to work with him. I mean...
And I guess I don't have a problem with going to suburban commercial on both lots. The only concern I have is because I guess even my current commercial building under the...and the planning zoning might be...Chris might have better ideas. I guess from the parking lot standpoint, that does not fit the suburban commercial, so they'd have to grandfather that in.
That already is grandfathered in under the P D R, though. They cannot make you move that.
Okay, so, but I mean, on the other lot that has not been built on, I would be okay with the suburban commercial.
That paving was approved. These guys can say all they want, they cannot make you move it. Once it's in, it's in.
But on the other lot, though, if we were to switch it to suburban commercial versus the mixed use, you know, to stay away from what the neighbors are concerned about, I'm not going to put a gas station there. I'm okay with that, other than, you know, the parking would have to...
I think you can legally put a gas station next to a park.
Two parlor, a bar, or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I just said, I'm not planning that, so my hands were tied by the definition of mixed use versus the N C two. So I'm okay with the suburban commercial, as long as I can't...my current property grandfather's in, and the next one would just have to follow that, if that would make the neighbors happier in that regard. The mixed use is above what I really need. I just think that the verbiage of all of them don't really fit exactly.
Pretty question, Mayor, correct. Especially on the site that already has the building that's approved by site plan, unless something major happens on the plan that the entire site's redeveloped. There is a requirement in the suburban commercial zone that parking cannot be located in the front yard. Any requirement with the zoning code could be appealed by site plan to planning and zoning that could also be appealed to city council. Either zoning district, suburban, commercial, or mixed use does have a twenty-five-foot buffer yard requirement from the residential to the north. And again, staff can approve the site plan if that buffer yard is met. If it can't be met, if the site's too narrow or the developer doesn't want to meet that requirement, they can appeal that with site plan to planning and zoning and could be appealed to city council.
All right, thank you. Anyone else be heard?
Jeremy Saints, six fourteen Pierce Street, attorney for Castle's Gate Homeowners Association. Again, just a couple of quick points. I think that if you were to go ahead and rezon the northern lot, I think the homeowners would be losing certain rights as well because there...with no development imminent there, there's no reason to go ahead and rezon it, whereas under the P D R process, it wouldn't be until development was imminent that we would come in and we would see if what is being proposed is going to fit in with the uses. If we just strictly go to suburban commercial or go to mixed use, then, as I understand, there's not going to be an additional...it's, you know, we're going to lose that level of review that was built in from the beginning to protect the homeowners and make sure that whatever went in was going to be compatible. So I would argue that this isn't, you know, this isn't the appropriate time to go back and rezon the northern lot. And as far as the southern lot goes, I believe, if I understood the explanation correctly, mixed use is going to be more expansive than the office use that was limited under the P D R. And so the homeowners association would oppose that because, you know, they're, of course, limited by what's out there, and...but there was the expectation that it was going to be that kind of use, and if we expand it into, you know, something that's more expansive, then we're, again, defeating the homeowners' reasonable expectations.
If we did treat this property owner the same way as the property owner across the street, where there's a vacant lot on the corner.
Yeah, I wonder how that stayed mixed...how that got to be mixed use in our new zoning.
Because that's what just kills me.
That was rezoned by council action in April.
Oh, right, before the deal.
After the zoning...it was after the new zoning code was approved. It was zoned N C two with this new zoning code in two thousand and fifteen and was rezoned in April to...
It's awfully hard for me to tell a property owner that's already there with a business that he can't have the same zoning as the property across the street, essentially. I mean, we've done this all over town before and restricted zoning for properties across the street. I just don't think it's right.
Well, that's...
I mean, and I understand, you know, it's hard to oppose the neighborhood when, like, all but seven people signed a petition, but, you know, you have certain property rights, and he was the first one there, so go ahead.
Casey Fenton, eighteen hundred Third Street. I probably have absolutely no business being up here right now, and I'll probably make some enemies because of it. I built the second house out of Whispering Creek. I was part of the development shortly after it started. I spec-built four houses, three of them on Castle Gate and one abutting this property on Whispering Creek Drive. I knew that those two lots were commercial when I built them as spec houses. I sold them. Sold the spec houses. Everybody that bought my houses out there knew those were commercial lots. I lived on Castle Gate Drive for...up six months ago, moved off of there. I lived there for a year. We never had additional traffic from the two commercial properties. There's a design review committee that is...that reviews the designs, so it matches all of the existing houses there at all. And everybody that lives on Castle Gate Drive should have known or would have known when they bought the house or built their house that they were commercial, so.
Thank you.
Tom Jarrett, homeowners, president of Castle's Gate Drive. Mr. Fenton, I...when I moved out there, it was just a vacant lot, nothing there, and I don't think anybody out there knew that was going to be a commercial lot. Granted, Mr. Venn's building's there. It looks nice and everything, but that was just a vacant lot. I talked to Mr. Venn. He came to a homeowners meeting, and he just bought that lot from Todd Sapp, and he said it was going to be...they might put a parking lot there. He needed the extra parking. But I did have...nobody...I don't think anybody out there had a clue that that was going to be another commercial place to put a bill or anything. And then you're talking about the stuff across the street, Mr. Alexander's mixed use. That's all commercial? Well, yeah, that doesn't sit right on the side of a golf course either. So I...I just...as much opposition as you have, again, rezoning that twenty-seven...I can't...oh, three or whatever, thirty, I think you ought to reconsider that because there's a lot of opposition.
And...
Everybody on the street does not want that zoned.
And that's a challenge, you know?
Yeah, it is.
It's not something where I'd ever want to vote against, something where, like, ninety...
It's not something where I'd ever wanna vote against, something where, like, ninety-seven percent of the neighborhood doesn't seem to want it, but at the same time, he had that zoning, our zoning ordinance rewrote and changed it.
Yeah, and, you know, I agree, property owner ought to be able to do, but it's just, we spent a lot of money, we spent a lot of money looking out at the golf course, there was a berm there, Magellan pipeline, we paid a lot, a lot of money to have a nice view, and he puts a building out there or anything like that, we lost it, we got real nice.
I totally understand where you guys are all coming from, but he paid a lot of money to get his property also.
Yeah, well, everybody up there paid a lot of money, too.
I understand that, but he was the first one there, evidently, that-
Well, yeah, I, the first one there, that's fine, but I really, Ron, I don't think anybody up there knew that there was gonna be any more, that was just a vacant lot when I moved there, and, you know, we didn't know what it was gonna be, probably for another house, you know, another townhouse or something.
Sure. It's kinda like, you know, he should've read the paper that one day. You know, it's the same thing, you know, I mean, it's crazy.
Maybe things weren't done right.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, it's-
Like I say, I, the building he's got now, it's a nice building, it fits in there perfect, but as far as anything, I, first of all, I don't know where he's gonna put, or how you'd even put a building in that small space. If there's gotta be a twenty-five-feet buffer, you have to stay a hundred feet from that pipeline, I don't know where you're gonna park, I just don't know what you're gonna do there. I'm not a architect or anything else, so maybe a kid, but-
Yeah, I'm not either, so I-
No, but it does limit him to, because it's two parcels, it does limit him if he wanted to put in it, because he could do that addition on his existing building, that's where he made a mistake, by the way, is separating the parcels, but if it were one parcel, he would have the right to be able to do that.
Just add on to his building, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the problem I have. We've taken this whole lot, now I made a park for the city that we don't wanna pay for.
Well, but, I just, you can look at, you've seen the petition, you've seen all the opposition, you know what's going-
You're missing the point on-
Maybe I am, okay?
It's not about you guys, it's not about him, it's about a zoning ordinance that upsets the heck out of me, that it takes property rights away from people.
Right.
That's where I'm upset.
Okay.
It just, we shouldn't be able to do that to people, that's my point.
Well, I've probably been here three minutes, so I'm gonna-
Thank you.
Well, what happened, just out of curiosity, if he now tried to make that one piece and wanted to add on to that building, he would have the twenty-five-foot setback?
He wouldn't have to actually combine it the way we would view it, to be rezoned, and he would be able to expand across the property line.
Jay Lehman, sixty-seven oh one, Kingswood Court. I and my wife are the business that's looking to take some space in Steve's building, and my wife and I were also the fourth house built out of Whispering Creek, so we've been there quite some time, seen a lot of, live there, we love the neighborhood, we wanna enhance the neighborhood, we don't wanna take away from it. However, those lots, I would echo what Casey had said, have been, from the day we bought our lot, and it was still a pasture, there wasn't even streets, we're always told that there was going to be commercial in the area, and that was the general vicinity that we were told it would be in. We were also told that we were gonna get a convenience store, and we were gonna get another nine holes, and we were gonna get all kinds of stuff. But the-
I'd spend more there to make capital calls than I could at the Country Glove, not have to drive.
I hear you, I hear you. So, it's a fantastic area, I believe my wife's business will definitely enhance the area. I don't think traffic is gonna be an issue, that was one of the concerns that, quite honestly, she had, but because of the way that Steve's business complements hers, and hers complements Steve's, I think it will work very, very well for that space. I can understand the residents' concern, as would be mine, if we're gonna go to mixed use right on the golf course, it allows for a very broad use of commercial, things such as pawn shops, tattoo studios, all kinds of things. I don't think it's realistic that anyone would probably look at that space for a pawn shop, or for those type of businesses, but I also understand that if it's already in the zoning, that would be of some concern. I would echo what Mr. Scott had said, we are, as citizens, taking the property that was already commercial, we gave Mr. Alexander the right to have mixed use right across the street, and now we're asking Steve to alter an investment that he made way before any of the condos were there, or any of the homes were there. Everyone drove by that building when they went to either look at their lot, or purchase their condo, so they knew that there was commercial there from day one. So, we wanna continue to be a good neighbor, like I said, we love the neighborhood, we were one of the first ones there, and plan to stay there very long.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bev Lesman, and we just bought that house that Casey Fenton was talking about at twenty-five forty Castle's Gate, and I, so we're really new to this, and my understanding with the planning thing was, I think the main concern was that we needed to get that rezoned to get her beauty shop there, and I don't think anyone had an issue with that part of it, it's, I mean, I know them, very good people, and all that type of stuff, but to rezone it, we thought it was a very nice compromise to do that suburban, because I don't know if you guys know the definition, I didn't until we went to planning, and I was shocked, I'm sorry to say, that right there could be that pawn shop that he was just talking about, or a tattoo store or something, but by going to suburbal, suburban, it keeps it more respectable, and it allows for, you know, the regular lawyer, that type of a commercial building, it doesn't take the commercial away from it, he can still do that as a commercial place, and I think that it was a very, very nice compromise. And I would really like you guys to consider just waiving the twenty-seven thirty, as was recommended by the planning, and then considering changing that twenty-two to suburban. I think it's a great compromise, and I can't speak for everybody, but I think everyone would be very pleased, because they can get the beauty shop there, and everything basically stays the same, except for them getting the beauty shop, which I think is very acceptable. So, that's my opinion, and I'd love you to consider that.
Can you put a beauty shop with the SC though?
Yes, it's allowed to use.
Yeah.
Sure hope you can't put lawyers there with that, I mean. Take a tattoo parlor over them.
And I think, and to that point, I think, I know you guys are concerned about, you know, should it be mixed use versus suburban, commercial, I understand that. I think suburban, commercial was essentially more what that place was always designed to be, and I understand the petitioner just looked across the street and said, hey, they've got mixed use over there, but really, this is, this portion was much more designed for the suburban.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but I just wonder why you guys are struggling with, knowing that there's a twenty-five-foot setback, why you just didn't do the SC on the next lot?
Like I said, we thought it was a reasonable compromise.
If you can't, if you can't screen a neighborhood with twenty-five feet, God help us.
Like I said, what we thought was, at the time we made our recommendation, we thought it was a reasonable compromise, given that no development is planned for that northern lot. There's nothing planned, there's nothing in specs, there's no site plan, and he would've had to come forward anyway, just, you know, to, just like he would if he followed a recommendation, to have that whole issue reviewed again. So, we didn't feel like we were taking anything-
The way you can restore that fairly, and still be fair to the neighbors, is to rezone that lot, because with the twenty-five-foot setback, the neighbors are going to be protected, and he gets his commercial rights back to that particular lot. And to ask him to have to come back again and spend three hundred and fifty dollars, to me, is not, then we should spend the three hundred and fifty dollars when he wants to come back, because that just doesn't seem fair to me. I mean, you can't argue that, I'm sorry, Jeff, I know you're proud of the zoning ordinance because you spent a lot of time on all you guys, and it's probably ninety-nine percent of the time, it's gonna be very good, but this is the second time, it just appears to me that it's got some flaws in it.
I think, like Jason's saying, though, Mayor, I mean, I think there's some validity to a site plan concept.
But we don't have it anymore, Dan.
No, but we did, and so, you know, you don't improve the position of either, and I'm just wondering if there isn't some compromise through the use and the working of a site plan, that can address the concerns of the residential owners, and the concerns of the commercial developer.
You're asking a question of whether we could use a site plan?
Right.
No, there's no site plan allowed inside of the new zoning code, as I understand it. We moved away from site plans.
Concept, how about a concept?
The concept, I think, our recommendation matches, I think, the concept as best you can under the current code, which is the northern lot, he would, if he wanted to redevelop that, he owns it, if he wants to develop it for commercial use, he would need to come back and have that rezoned, and then, and if it's rezoned, he can develop it. Otherwise, he could develop it residentially.
Yeah, I follow.
And one-
I was gonna ask Mr. Santo, is your client, for your client, is it all or nothing on that north parcel?
He's not representing the client, he's representing the homeowners.
No, your client, and I-
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you're Mr. Saint's client, the homeowners association, is it all or nothing on that north lot?
I think, for the time being, we'd certainly like to see it not, not rezoned, simply because we would lose that opportunity to review that we would've had under the old system, that-
You don't get to review, you only get to oppose.
Well, right, that's-
I mean, he could come with a great site plan.
An opportunity for input, but I think to the point, though, is, it's quite possible that in the future, he comes and wants to rezone it, and he has something, and he shows it to the neighbors, and they're like, you know, we don't really want something there, but that's not too bad, so, you know, you could, it's the fact that you've got the empty lot right now, that could be a lot of things, especially if it's zoned mixed use.
I'm gonna play the devil's advocate, let's assume you were representing the petitioner here.
Okay.
And you were an attorney, and they had rezoned a piece of ground that you thought you had, how, how would you feel as an attorney on that? I mean, I think, I'm practicing law here, which I do all the time, I've never been brought before the bar, which I know Mr. Moore before I'm done will, but I don't see how you can't argue that this is somewhat of a taking.
Well, I, I think that the takings clause, though, is, you know, it can't be taken-
Well, you can certainly sue for loss of value.
Without due process, though, and so, the question then would be, was due process provided in two thousand and fifteen?
Oh, good, and a newspaper ad on Saturday morning is not due process, I don't care what you attorneys wanna tell me, that's not due process. Smile all you want, Mr. Von Drack, you can't win that one across the street, nice try.
I'm here to say that we took due process, and we followed the Iowa code when we changed this zoning code.
I understand that.
That's my story, and that's-
I know, you're sticking to it, but a sympathetic jury of twelve of your peers may not feel the same exact way as what the Iowa code does.
Then it's gonna take a code change for, to invalidate our code.
You know, we can't tell when we, when we don't let the public know that we're doing something on the street. So, all of a sudden, here we put it in the paper one time, and everybody's supposed to know what's going on. So, you know, I think Steve should've had, should've had an opportunity, at least got a letter in the mail, letting him know what was going on.
Everybody that had the property downzoned should've had a letter in the mail.
Exactly, and that's my whole point. You know, here we are, a half hour into this whole freaking thing, arguing about what? You know, we just wanna do the right thing, we wanna make the homeowners happy, and we wanna make the Steve happy, you know, and-
Zoning. We don't do it as frequently as we used to, but it may be an option to start bringing up, because we don't have dash PDs, we don't have plan developments, we don't do site plans anymore.
So, can you do MC, and then restriction to office use?
Absolutely. You could put restrictions in.
Why are we looking at that?
I would elaborate, the zoning code does allow multiple different ways that a site plan would have to go through planning and zoning. The first is that the standards of the code can't be met, and the petitioner, the developer, can request changes from what the code would require. The second is staff can propose that the item go through the planning commission for review. Both of those would require notification of the neighbors, so they would be notified of that site plan. Plan and zoning commission would hear it, either the property owner or neighbors would then be able to appeal to council as well, who would have the final say.
So-
But this could be rezoned with that condition.
That's essentially what it was before.
Exactly.
So, what is that?
If council wanted to give us direction that any development on that north lot would have to go through site plan approval, then when that were to develop, we would bring it forward.
We would actually need a part of the resolution in the rezoning, that something is gonna be recorded on that zoning, that there is a restriction, so subsequent purchasers know that that parcel is subject to conditions, subject to a site plan.
You put like a twenty-year sunset on that, too, though?
You certainly could.
So, I like that idea.
That's what planning and zoning recommended, in a sense.
Planning and zoning recommend only rezoning the south lot to SC.
Yeah, our recommendation was not to start, start adding, that option was presented. We didn't wanna start fiddling around with conditions, adding conditions that will have to be enforced later down the road, and remembered, if we felt as though the zoning that we had proposed-
I have a feeling a lot of these people aren't gonna forget.
Well, the zoning that was proposed, that the SC zoning, the suburban, commercial, would meet what we're looking for, so why, that was our, that was the planning and zoning commission, that was our recommendation. So, we heard that, you're more than welcome to do that, obviously, that's your call, but that's the reason we didn't walk down that path.
But really, what's fair is the property owner should have the closest to what he had, and I think what Chris just described really is exactly what he used to have.
And Keith, I'm gonna disagree with you on the point of what he had, I don't think it was mixed use rights is what he had. Suburban, commercial rights was probably more in line with what he had. It was designed to be office space, not a tattoo parlor, not a convenience store.
What did it say he had?
It was in the site plan.
Original concept plan approved in two thousand and three.
Whatever's approved by a site plan, but ideally, I mean, it was office space.
Well, shouldn't a site plan have what you could have in there? I mean, I guess I don't know what a site plan is.
In the old days, you had to go back and modify the site plan if you wanted a change of use.
So, that's where-
That was your conditions and restrictions.
Okay, so that's not why we have rezoning, and we have an NC-2, instead of a site plan?
Right.
All right.
Then you define in those different zones what's required for screening, and all of those other things. So, is there a compromise?
Well, Chris, what is that? It's MC with-
It would be rezoning to suburban, commercial, the standards of the code would apply if council wanted to give us direction, or if, for some reason, when the development comes forward, it does not meet all the requirements of that code, or that zoning district, it would have to go through site plan approval, through planning and zoning, which could be appealed to city council.
But before, it was supposed to be like office space, which is not suburban, commercial.
Yeah, office space, yeah, suburban, commercial's designed to be kind of a professional office center, insurance offices, attorney's offices, medical practice, not high traffic, you know, eight to five hours, that's the feel of a suburban, commercial zone, which is what we believe they really have there today, and what was, what we believe was intended.
There's more uses allowed in the SC than just only office that would've been allowed through the PDR, unless there was more uses listed on the site plan. So, there'd be more uses allowed by right, so like the nail salon, spa, a lot of the retail uses would be allowed by conditional use permit, which would have to go through another hearing process if those were to locate there.
But Jason's real estate office moves there.
Would be allowed.
He's allowed.
Others to be heard?
Anyone else be heard?
Lesman, I live at twenty-five forty Castle's Gate, and we just moved there Thanksgiving weekend. Comment was made that anybody driving down that street should, basically, seeing that building, would think there could be another commercial building going in right there. I'm gonna hit this from a, you guys are talking about all these land uses, but if you take a look at that piece of land, there's no way you can put a building on that piece of land and still have that parking lot the same size it is, because there's not enough land there. So, besides talking about all the uses of the property, legally, you don't have enough room in that land to build a building, and still have that same parking lot there.
But if he did wanna put an addition onto the current building?
Oh, addition on the current building? Yeah, but that's, that'd still be in the same lot that he's on.
Correct.
You're talking about putting another building?
No, it'd have to, it'd have to go, it would have to go over into the next lot to put an addition on, of any size.
Oh, I would agree, but depending on how big that addition is, what I'm saying is, if you put a separate building on that north lot, there's not enough room there.
Is that a narrow lot?
It's a real narrow lot, you've got, yes, to the north, you've got Tom's house, to the east, you've got this Magellan pipeline, and then the golf course, and there's a creek back there.
Yeah, you can't go further towards the golf course at all, because the pipeline easement's right there.
No, and then, and you'd be, actually, you'd have to, you know, I'm in the construction business, you'd have to break up his parking lot to get a building in there, and now you got less parking.
You can see it on the concept plan from two thousand and three, but this is the hundred-foot pipeline easement on the east side of the property behind the building.
On a side note, can we get our internet working again the right way, because we can't even go to Beacon's website right now.
Is that a building that's drawn on there?
What's that? What's that? Yeah, it's a building drawn on there.
But you're saying they couldn't do that building that's drawn on there now?
Well, I think that-
Well, you could put a building in there, but you couldn't put a very big building in there.
It would be a small building.
It'd be awful small building, and then you're gonna have to break up that parking lot, you know, to get that building in there, now you got less parking. Because the parking lot's a pretty good-sized piece of asphalt there. Thank you.
Anyone else?
What's the council want to do?
Well, may I ask the applicant a, a couple of questions, please? By no means is this binding, I'm just trying to find a compromise or something that can work with residential. With the tight space allegedly that that north parcel has, with the pipeline and the setback and all of that, would you be open to considering, uh, whether you're gonna do a building addition, uh, going north, or whether you want a single building? Would you be open to conditions and restrictions?
Yeah, I, I-
And a site plan, I call it a site plan, because I'm old school, and that's what I know.
Yeah, and I guess I've got the original site plan I was talking about, I don't know if you guys have access to it, but it kind of shows what in 2006, and you know, and if you want to look into it, because it's gonna show my building, and then it shows future building on that. But again, I think the parking itself, to Mr. Lesman's comment, is I think my site plan, even if it was suburban commercial, the north lot, I'd have to meet the city spec- specifications for the size of my building and the parking anyway, so yes, I might downsize that, but if I can still get a real estate office in there, which I would think planning and zoning doesn't need a ton of traffic or a ton of parking, I might have enough parking to put a separate building in, and still stay within the 25-foot buffer, and not need as much parking as I have there now. And again, I mean, I guess my hands are tied, if I were gonna sell that lot, because Mr. Ricky was interested in buying it from me, but he ended up buying and building up on that other area, um, and I think just for these reasons is, I, I, it's gonna steer some other people away if I wanted to sell the lot, you know, heaven forbid something happens to me tomorrow, my wife may not want the business, what is that property worth to her and my family then if I'm not here? I guess I've gotta look at big picture things as well, so, so yeah, I would not be opposed to consider that by any means, um, uh, to, to add a little, make it a little longer, more of a strip mall, and it wouldn't be, it'd be, obviously, it would aesthetically look at my, like my building, but I, I would not be opposed to that. It may actually be in my best interest to do that, and take the space, and, and, and use it wisely, so.
But it doesn't offend you to think of the concept of working with the neighbors?
Oh, no, not at all. No, like I said, I, I like my neighbors, I mean, some of them have been patients of mine, or, you know, I mean, are friends, and, and you know, kind of scares them, and that's why I would not be opposed to make the north lot suburban commercial, as is the recommendation of the committee to make this, or have the south lot suburban commercial. I think by putting the mixed use, it scared my neighbors, and I think rightly so, because if I do die tomorrow and somebody else buys it, who knows what they'd put in. I know I won't, but I think they, they at least deserve that right to make sure it doesn't, and I think that suburban commercial on both lots, I think would remedy that, and again, if that other lot was suburban commercial, I'd have to follow the zoning and planning, I'd have to have enough parking lot to substantiate the building, so I'd be limited, and that would, that would steer me to, to come back to the council, get that approved anyways, I believe, underneath the suburban commercial even. Because that also, I think, doesn't, Chris, allows me to do some of the mixed use stuff, but it would have to come before the council. Up to a point, is what I was getting out of the literature.
Typically, with developments under our code currently, if all standards are met, it does not have to go through any further review than administrative. So it would be able to prove it at that level. The only time it would come to council is if staff recommended that it come to, or come to planning and zoning, excuse me. Would be if staff recommended, or if there's standards within the code that can't be met.
Right, but if staff recommends that you pay to send the neighbors a letter, he doesn't have to as part of his 350 bucks.
Correct, we would always send a notice, staff do, yeah.
So I guess to answer your question, Dan, no, I would not be opposed to consider that a- I, I guess my concern is that I'd like to have something moving forward, so I have, if it's zoned suburban commercial, it, it, it's financially better for me to, if I had to sell it for some reason, or, you know, or, I mean-
Which comes first, though, the rezoning of suburban commercial, and then the conditions and restrictions that I'm talking to you about, the site plan? Or do you do that first, and then come in with suburban?
We would rezone it first, uh, because if the site plan comes forward and it meets code, uh, it would go to the planning and zoning commission, if that's the direction I'm hearing tonight. Planning and zoning commission theoretically approves the site plan that's in front of them, unless it's appealed, that's the final step. Um, if either the neighbors or the petitioner appeals the planning and zoning's decision, then it, or, yeah, appeals planning and zoning, then it would come before council for the final hearing.
Is there a plan right now?
No.
Without giving anything away, no plan to do anything with the-
No, just, just the future, I'd like to be able to have that option. And, and you know, whether it's next year, and two years, three years, you know, and, and I, and I would communicate with the homeowners and, and my neighbors before I move forward, just, just out of courtesy of letting them know what's going on, and, and again, I, I, I'd like to be a good neighbor, and I think I could make it aesthetically appealing, and and still keep, keep all parties, I think, happy with that, but.
Mr. Saint, is that something that your client could be open to as well? I mean, I don't want to try to, I'm not trying to make a deal on the floor, I'm just trying to, where is the openness, and are you gonna run into any kind of resistance? To, to look at a planned concept.
I mean, I, I, I think, I think the homeowners association really would prefer that the northern lot wait until development is imminent, just so that, because whatever development gets planned, it, it, it might diffuse the entire situation, they might see it and say, oh, that's, that's reasonable. Or, or it might be something that frightens them, and they want to fight hard on, but it's, uh, I, I think, I, I think the compromise that the planning and zoning is proposed is, is pretty reasonable, it, it allows, it, it allows what the petitioner's asking for on the southern lot, but, but it also preserves, uh, the right of, of the homeowners i- i- in, in the area to have some, an opportunity to object or some input, once the northern lot is developed, to make sure it's in a way that is consistent with what whatever was expectations for all along.
And if, if, help me if, unless I misunderstood, that as Jason explained it earlier, the SC seems to be appropriate, because it would be more restrictive, and it would allow for just a professional office use, and I don't hear any objections from the homeowners, if that's what it turned out to be?
Well, the original intent of all the land was SC, essentially.
Yes.
So Mr. Saint's saying he wants to have some input before we go to SC, before suburban commercial, aren't you? Before we go to that, what assurances do they have, do the homeowners have, that there, that there would be restrictions and conditions that the applicant would, would need to work with them on?
Well, wouldn't that-
What assurances?
The current code, plus you'd have the easements and setbacks that are already on the property, the limited. Because basically, almost 50% of that property is unusable, really, isn't it? The back half?
It's a private easement, I don't know what would be allowed to go over that, if parking could be placed on that, I'm not aware.
My understanding, when I was talking to developer and talked to Magellan or Williams at the time, was that if I put something there, it was under the understanding that they could come in and tear it up at any time, so that I could put a parking lot there or something, but, but they could come in tomorrow and tear it up at, at my expense, or uh, they're not gonna replace it, so whether that would ever happen, I, I doubt, but, but again, I would just as soon not invest a bunch of money to have somebody come in and replace it, that I know could be, and, and I guess, I don't think it would look good back there. I'd, I, I think with Mr. Jared, I, I, I'd like to keep it aesthetically looking nice as well.
Exactly, nobody from the golf course wants to see a parking lot.
And I would never want to put a parking lot down, so yeah, that would be the furthest from my-
You know, I, I kind of, I don't know.
Well-
Here, here's my thought, I think suburban commercial would be, I think would satisfy everybody, because I feel that the homeowners, well, you're gonna talk to them before you do anything to begin with, correct?
I mean, that would be my, I would like to be, at least let them have some input, and showing them what I'm gonna do. Kind of like what I did with Todd Sap on my building, I had to show him what it was gonna look like, he had to approve that it looked more like a house than a, than a, than an office, if you will. Well, if everyone thinks that's fair, I'd move to change them both to suburban commercial.
But Ron, to just, but of the record, I mean, you're willing to do that, and I really appreciate it, but like you said, if you're gone tomorrow, you know, and you have a third party coming in, we want to make sure there's something of record documented-
Right.
That the homeowners would have that ability to do that very thing.
Dan, you could do that with suburban commercial, and condition it upon site plan approval at the staff level, appealable to planning and zoning, appealable to council. So you, it sounds like suburban commercial with, with the condition that there is a site plan.
Site plan.
Question about that, Justin would be, and, and sort of to the mayor's point, what notice would the homeowners get about this, that approach?
They're, they're within the mailing distance, so they will get mailed that there will be a, a site plan at the staff level.
Okay, so even if it's staff level, but, was I understanding earlier saying that staff could approve, and it wouldn't necessarily have to go to planning and zoning, or would it?
It wouldn't have to, but there could be direction right now that, that it could. The first step that it's appealed to is the planning and zoning commission, so hypothetically speaking, if the HOA didn't like it, they could appeal it to the planning and zoning commission. If they didn't like the planning and zoning commission's review, they can appeal it to council, then it goes to district court.
If council adds the condition that a site plan would be required, we would put that on the zoning map. So either if, uh, potential developers looking at Beacon, looking at the zoning, or staff looking at the map, it would show that condition has been placed by council, and would require a site plan to go through the process, to go through planning and zoning.
I think that should have some kind of sunset, though. I mean, otherwise, 20 years from now, they're gonna look back and say, what the heck was this council thinking?
They're gonna look back at a lot of our decisions. Don't let that even be a problem, if that's all they questioned, they're in good shape.
They may be here, we won't.
A timeframe for me to be able to act upon that action? No, the sunset on the, uh, the site plan approval side of things, I mean, the, the SC zoning is gonna be restrictive enough, really, and the, the current lot layout and everything with setbacks is also plenty restrictive, so I, I think that-
But let's not confuse it, because it's hard, and if something's gonna happen, it's gonna happen in 20 years, you know what I mean?
Sure.
Because that, because that thing could burn down, and you'd have to go through it again, even on the rebuild, technically. If it's in there, it's in there, once it's built, it's, it's grant, I mean, it's there.
I'm saying, the sunset on the, uh, site plan.
No, I know, I know what you're saying.
And I might be back in 20 years when I'm young and energetic.
I won't be, so.
Yes, you will.
Ron, did you want to make that motion according to what they said, then?
Not with the conditions.
Not with the conditions.
SC is suburban commercial, right?
Okay, let's start fresh, has there been a second?
I'll second.
No, don't yet. Has there been a second? If not, then reword your motion and get a second.
Keith?
Reword your motion according to what Justin-
I'll just let the motion die.
I'm sorry. The council's supportive of, uh, suburban commercial, on the condition that any proposed development has to come forward with a site plan to be approved at the staff level or planning and zoning level.
All right, I'll go with it.
With the neighbors?
I know you're not 100% involved.
But I think that's what the PDR essentially would have given me, too, is I would have had to come in front of you to okay that. Well, that makes sense.
Okay, with the neighbors being noticed before, everybody will know what's going on.
Absolutely, as required.
All right.
Is there a, who made the motion?
I'll make the motion where he just said, how's that sound?
He did.
Okay, I'll second it, I'll second it.
Now, just for clarification, I don't think, I don't know how the vote's gonna go, but your petition doesn't pertain to this motion, because you made it be for MU only, just so you understand. In case it doesn't, let's just say it would pass three to two, okay, just so you know. You understand what I'm saying? Because it, it takes four votes in order to pass something that's being opposed, but your petition is, was for MU only.
Well, yeah, it, it was for the, the proposed zoning amendment.
Which was MU. MU's off the table, so it only takes three votes, is what I'm trying to tell you.
I have a feeling it's probably-
It may pass more than that, I just want the, I just want to clarify that, so you understand why if it passes, that's all.
Would, would you state that one more time, what our motion is, so everybody's clear?
The motion will be to rezone it to suburban commercial, with the condition that-
Lots, or the?
Both, both lots. Both lots. And, and that it has to go to P and Z, uh, with, uh, an approved site plan.
And then to the council, automatically?
Only if one of those two appeal.
Appealable to the council, as, as per the rules.
Right.
With notice given to-
Yes, that's what I was just gonna say.
Ascorpio.
Yes.
Okay. So what's gonna trigger that first, the applicant coming in with?
The petitioner would come in with a proposed site plan. And then it would be put on, uh, the planning and zoning agenda. Notices would be sent, uh, to neighboring property owners, and as well as it would be published.
The fee would be waived.
It's, it's, in, in essence, it's exactly like the old PD process that we have-
Right.
Used to have to do, like you're familiar with.
But the petitioner wouldn't have to pay for it in this particular case, because he's already met the zoning, it's just, you're gonna make him, you're gonna send out notices because of the requirement, right? Okay. Okay, Lisa, do you understand where we're at here?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Calling the roll, or are we electronically voting?
I'm calling the amendment.
Okay.
Well, technically, an amendment is a motion. Or, I guess we're amending.
We didn't amend, the, the original motion that Keith made was not seconded, so it died for lack of a second.
Right.
So then Keith made a new motion, incorporated-
Well, there is no amendment, it, if this, if this passes, it passes now.
This is just, okay, got it.
Okay.
We're voting on what?
Unless you're-
Justin just said.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Brading.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Let me, let me ask this, to make sure, though, you're not, were you thinking this item 22 is the motion?
Nobody has made a motion on it.
Nobody made a motion to 22, so that, so what he did was right.
Okay.
Right. We're not going to second third tonight, we're gonna go on to hearing and ordinance rezoning 26, 27 and a half South Ruston Street, and 28, 19 Lincoln Way to Zone Classification, G I E P and Z recommends rezoning to G C General Commercial.
I'll move it.
Uh, mayor and council, this item came before us, a petitioner requesting rezoning of this site, um, to General Industrial. We reviewed, uh, this actually was held, this, this item was held for two meetings. We deferred action, because we needed more information, we reviewed this again, our recommend, uh, based on, uh, the recommendation of planning and zoning is that it not be rezoned to General Industrial, but rather zoned to General Commercial, and that was on a 3-2 vote.
We're gonna go back to 22, I don't-
Don't we have to delete it?
You gotta do something with it.
It be moved as first reading.
Yes, you have to do at least-
Okay, but if you're moving first reading, that means you're only moving the south lot, I hope you understand we're doing the north lot, too.
You've amended.
Okay, I'll move it, I'll move it.
But be moving it as amended.
Moving as amended, first reading.
Well, then I technically, I guess, yeah, we're good.
Is there a second?
I did a second. So we just voted on the amended, is-
No, no, let's just vote.
Okay, well, let's just vote.
You wanna wait for Dan, or you-
Oh, yeah, we have to.
Yeah.
Let's just talk.
You got a good joke, Rhonda.
Oh, this has been. Not really, that's not, hey, this is important, I, and I get it.
If a one-hump camel's a dromedary, and a two-hump camel's just a camel, what's a three-hump camel? I have no idea.
Lucky.
Pregnant.
Oh, okay, give up, give up the-
Give it a vote on 22, because we can't move forward. I guess, okay. Yeah, go, yeah.
Where are you going?
He, he thinks Dan had, thought he had a conflict, so he was vacate.
No, that's not what he, no.
Yeah, I don't.
Inflicted bladder, maybe.
We're gonna go till 6:30, if we're not done, we're taking a break then, I can tell you that.
I got another acronym for you, Mark, about SCRAM, we got Sioux City Recovery of Airborne Methane. There we go. But at least it's a word.
You can begin to understand when the meetings have gone too long.
The brain can absorb only that which the seat can endure.
That's wise. I would like to see us get some better, uh, I mean, is it just city guests that we have, all the restrictions, I can't even go to Beacon?
You should go to, you should be, uh, hooked to-
WCICC mobile?
Mobile.
Is that the-
Is that the trick? I've always had trouble with my tablet in here. Is it, is, it's the mobile site that that's the, that's where you should be on?
Yeah, but I didn't know, I didn't know the guests were that restricted either.
Yeah, there was, there's a number of restrictions on guests.
I was sneaking out.
Sorry.
Well, vote, and then you can go sneak out again.
So we're voting on...
Yeah, tell them what we're voting on.
22 as original.
First reading.
First reading, as amended, I'm sorry. As original.
We didn't just vote on that?
It's a long story.
Chris, do you have something?
Because I wouldn't know. We will send a notice to all the same property owners again.
Five zero. All right, now we are on 23.
Do I need to repeat what I said?
No.
Okay.
No, go ahead. Dan wasn't here, you're right.
Okay.
No, no, don't repeat, because I'm gonna abstain on this item. I have a conflict with others.
All right.
I'm 23, so thank you.
All right. Go ahead. Name and address, please.
Beverly Hines, 3121 Grandview Boulevard. Lewis and Clark History Buff.
Go ahead and tell us whether you're for or opposed.
I am opposed in this attitude that Sioux City has such, and most Sioux Cityans don't realize what we have in the Floyd Monument and the area that is there. You also have across the street and on the corner of Lincoln Way, First Bride's grave. But I am speaking to the Floyd Monument because I am president of the local Lewis and Clark Sergeant Floyd Tri-State Chapter, member of the Lewis and Clark Trail Heritage Foundation. I am president of the Middle Missouri Midmo, which is the Middle Missouri River Lewis and Clark Networking. I take care of the register for the Parks Department, and so I know who has signed and where they have come from. We've had visitors in the last couple of months from Micronesia, from England, from Canada, plus most of the states. This area should be kept and appreciated for what we have there. You already have a raceway on Highway 75. I dare you to drive 45 and try and get into the traffic that's moving at 60. But this is an important area to Sioux City. I put out a new register on Saturday, checked it Sunday afternoon. We've had 22 people sign, again, from all over the country. We have something there. Took poor Sergeant Floyd his fourth burial to get to that place. But the history that we have, and is a national registered historic landmark, we need to keep it so that A, signage is good to find it. B, we don't have a lot more commercial there than what we already have. And so, right now, I am opposed to it for historical value, for what we have for our area, for keeping some green space, for keeping it so that people who come from all over the country to attend and visit the site have ease of doing so.
Thank you. Old zoning ordinance, what was it?
RG 50. It was zoned residential.
So it was residential before?
Correct.
And it still is residential?
Correct.
Chris, can you put up the zoning map, please?
Okay, anyone else to be heard?
Elaborate. This is the zoning map of the area. The two properties that are highlighted here are what's being requested to be rezoned. As Jason stated earlier, the petitioner did require, request GI zoning, which is currently zoning of portion of the Hillcrest Center to the north. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission did, uh, recommend GC zoning, General Commercial. The petitioner's intended use of self-storage would be a conditional use within that site, so we would need to see a site plan at that time. And the Floyd Monument to the west is zoned public institutional, and a good portion of the property around it is currently zoned NC4 residential.
Yeah, we felt as though GC more matched the temperament of, or the, more matched the properties to the north than the actual use. The other thing is, is that we never saw a site plan, and there is drainage issues on this site that need to be addressed, and questions about what it's gonna look like, those aren't answered today. Uh, with the conditional use permit process going through the Board of Adjustment, those questions would have to be answered, but it does not absolutely guarantee approval either.
Somebody else wants to be heard, Beth.
I'm Tim Peifel, CEO of Telkotriad Community Credit Union. We have our main office at 1420 Triview Avenue, and we have a branch location at 5500 50 Glen Avenue, representing 14,000-plus members. I'm here to oppose the zoning change. Our location is just north of the subject property. Uh, our plea to council is that it will devalue the, the property we have in the area. Uh, we contend that the zoning was there when the purchase was made. There's nothing against the current owner, but, uh, when you have 100 tenants, sometimes it's tough to, to keep property up when you have 10. We're talking many more, and, uh, we all know what people treat property that they don't own. Uh, as a citizen, I guess, uh, looking at the property in 10, 20, 30 years, what's it gonna look like to our children? And, uh, I can show you the other properties of, uh, of, uh, of such, and how they look, so I would ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tell me that again, why it would have to have a conditional use?
Because...
I can explain. Uh, General Industrial, the GI that's right above it, allows, as a matter of right, for self-storage units. General Commercial, um, allows it by way of a conditional use permit. The petitioner's application wanted GI for obvious reasons, that he wouldn't have to come back for a conditional use permit. Um, Planning and Zoning thought that GC was a better fit and had some control with a conditional use permit.
Okay, let's, before we have somebody oppose, uh, let's have the petitioner speak, if we could. Let's let, can we let the petitioner speak first, and then we'll, we'll get to you?
First, I'd like to address the drainage concerns that, uh, members may have. The property has been under, uh, a lawsuit over the last three years on, uh, the above property draining on due mine. That has been now, currently been resolved and is in, uh, process of a settlement. It went through Iowa Courts, Appeals, and I won. Uh, and now we're just waiting to go through the process of, uh, final court for, uh, the dollar amounts that will be occupied to me. Drainage issue, it was granted through the court system, um, allowing me to connect to my neighboring, uh, above me, so we don't have any drainage issues on the surface anymore. The concerns, when I went through the previous zoning, was the elevations. The elevations of a storage unit will be at minimum 12, maximum 14 foot. If I were to build a fourplex on it, it would range between 30 and 35 feet in height. I do have a conceptual plan that shows a buffer zone. And of this site plan, we have a signed purchase agreement for the Hillcrest property that's abutting the three acres. We've addressed a number of things. For trees, the, one of the concerns from Telkotriad was, in the next 20 to 30 years, what's that site gonna look like? Well, as the trees progress in size and elevations, um, they should exceed the height of any buildings that we would put there, um, in regards to a storage unit. We are gonna, as, as quoted before, it's GI on the Hillcrest Center, and we're gonna put storage units on that property regardless of whether we go down south on the Frontage Road. If, if we can't get this passed for some reason, which is gonna tighten us, so we build more storage units on the GI process, on the GI. This will allow us to spread it out, create a bigger green space.
I, I'm kinda confused. Where are you gonna build them? Is this the blue stuff? Is that what you're gonna be building? I know that, I know here. You're gonna build them there, or you're, if, if you don't get this rezoned to the, that you just had your pencil on. Where, where are we rezoning right now? Right here? Yeah, that's what I thought. So if you don't get that rezoned, then you're gonna build them back up here. Behind, is that behind the?
Behind, and then to the south of the entry, up to the south of the entry.
Okay. All right, go ahead. I just want, the, the map was a little deceiving there, so go ahead.
And then on the green area, that's an existing building, um, and do climate-controlled storage inside of there.
So you're buying the whole complex?
Correct.
Okay.
So is the orange gonna be like a, uh, strip mall, essentially, and the...
The orange is existing, buildings that are there.
But so is the green, right?
Correct.
So you're just gonna divide it up, essentially?
It, it's, essentially, it's already divided. They already have, uh, storage inside of there, year-round storage.
Okay, go ahead.
So is there any proposed access being put on the, on Business 75?
No. No access. We'll basically redesign the entry, um, create a little more green space, a little more buffer zone between any outdoor storage that we would have. We wouldn't have any garage doors facing 75 with respect to the monument. It would all be back. And it would be done per city code, per planning and zoning, along with our drainage. Current, uh, will follow all city codes, current codes of drainage. Any other questions?
Where would your detention bond be?
On the south end. And that would be calculated out. We'd keep the hill that's currently there, a green space. If I wall and lose the green space.
Any other questions?
What kind of green space are you talking?
Grass, grassy areas, um, shrubs, bushes, plants, and, uh, we'd leave it up to a landscape architect.
A hill, you'd probably wanna just keep grass for runoff reasons.
Correct. Hill stabilization.
Right, but he can put those towards the street.
Where's the mi, show me where the mi monument's at.
Across the street.
Oh, it's over here. Oh, yeah, okay.
As, as 70, as my property slopes to the south, the height on my northern end of my parcel, the top of the roof elevation will be an average of about 10 to 12 feet below the base of the monument.
So, as it is on the agenda, you would have to come back with a site plan, or what your recommendation was?
As it is on the agenda, it's rezoning to General Industrial, per the petitioner's request. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the GC zoning district, so if council were to agree with that, they would have to make the motion like you did on the last item to zone to General Commercial.
Chris, do you wanna talk about, I don't think staff would support this to be a flat-out GI, unless I'm wrong, but you, would it be your recommendation to put conditions on it?
In both of the General Industrial and General Commercial zones, there are standards that have to be met for self-storage. Um, and I can go through a couple of those really quick. There's four different alternatives can be chosen. Two of them would be all interior access to the individual units. Uh, the one that's been selected so far by developers, uh, the use is buffered by a type C buffer yard from street right of way, that includes a masonry wall. Uh, the use is buffered from adjacent, uh, abutting residential uses or districts. Building facades that are visible from the street right of way are finished with brick, thin brick, stone, or stucco. Uh, units are arranged so that bay doors are not visible from abutting street right of way, and that chain link fencing, if used, is not visible from street right of way. So all those standards would apply with either of the zoning districts.
So what if you did fencing other than chain link?
It would, he could do it, just not visible from street right of way, so it could be placed, I don't have my map up, on the east or south sides. Anything on the west, there'd have to be a building that would block the bay doors, or it could be a masonry wall.
Cedar fence.
It would have to be a masonry wall along the street right of way, building or masonry wall. The Kelly Pry self-storage units that were built, I believe it's on South Gate, north of Singing Hills, those used the building as their wall. So the bay doors faced, in this case, would be to the east, and the back of the wall, essentially, back of the building acted as that wall.
This would be built with the back of the wall to the street?
It could be built that way. The developer to have the choice of either.
Our intention is a $1.5 million improvement on the entire property, including it, current existing buildings, redoing their elevations and, uh, facades. And creating more green space.
I would move to amend to the GC.
Yeah, it is.
That's GI, you said.
No, they're recommending GC, so...
But it's on the agenda as GC.
It's on the, the agenda as General Industrial, GI. That's, that's what the petitioner originally...
Well, I can, I can move the planning and zoning recommendation.
Okay.
How about that?
That's what we normally do.
Perfect.
It's on both ways.
What has, well, we gotta, there's other people who want to be heard. Is there a second?
I just think that's fair.
Well, I'll make a second just to move it on. I'm, uh...
He's got property he writes to. He could, he could do condos if it's not what he's intending.
You, I like, let me tell you where I'm at. The National Park Service, and the mayor's right, there are others who, who need to speak, but the National Park Service, the Floyd Monument was, uh, there are over 2,500, uh, historic landmarks, and Floyd Monument was...
I gotta grab this call, because my son...
Was the first. Designation received in this program, June 30th, 1960, and, and, and I believe that, that the city should be concerned about the historic integrity, uh, of the Floyd Monument, and it should remain that way. So I'm not, I'm gonna vote against any, uh, any rezoning to allow that to interfere with what they call the historic, uh, integrity, which is defined by seven key qualities or characteristics, and I, I think it's that important that Sioux City has that designation as having the first national historic landmark, that we shouldn't, we shouldn't allow that to be altered in any way.
Well, he owns the property. He can alter it in any way. And if it's, I mean, he could put up a duplex or something right across the street today. No, I mean, just pull in a permit. So you can't keep him from not, the only way to do it is to buy the property from him.
No, or keep it residential.
Yeah, it's, it's neighborhood conservation right now.
No, he could build a residence on it right now. A duplex or...
Or a unit. But you can turn it...
There are some light commercial uses, uh, adult or childcare center, uh, general office is allowed in the NC4 as well.
So you're not stopping him from doing any development?
No, but I, I'm, I'm hoping to maintain the historic integrity of, of the Floyd Monument.
Well, I, you go to Washington DC, there's things all around the mines.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm concerned about Sioux City, Iowa.
Sure, I'm just...
Okay.
Bob Koacher, a 38, 39 Jones Street, Sioux City. I am the, uh, chairperson of the History Preservation Commission. And on our behalf, we recommend that this stay as residential. And I can almost, I can echo, uh, Hines and Councilman Gritkin, the importance of this historic site, fact that it is a landmark number one, listed before the Statue of Liberty and the Washington Monument. And the points I was gonna bring up, you did, Councilman Gritkin, the integrity of it, and there's seven things, but a lot of it has to do with the setting and the feeling of that. the integrity of it, and there's seven things of it, but a lot of it has to do with the setting and the feeling of that. When you're having the nation visit this site with an importance as high as the Statue of Liberty, Washington Monument, and almost 2,500 other ones, you want to maintain that setting and feeling that we hold this in esteem. And the citizens of Sioux City and the leadership of Sioux City, which you are, we are stewards of that property for the country. So you can't take this lightly. The general commercial, I would say the negative side of that is, in the future, if it's zoned commercial, you're not sure what's gonna go in there 20 years from now, 30 years from now. And this needs, site needs to be maintained for as long as the US is here. Those are things they can take in consideration. If this happened to be approved as general commercial, if that would happen, then I think some provisions need to be in, in, uh, put in place for the commission is gonna be part of the approval of what, how that land is gonna be protected site-wise. I know some of that was presented by the developer. But if that would happen, I think we need to be included to make sure that is maintained, if that's what has to be done. But we would prefer residential. I think the same thing would, would be the case. To put up something that looks residential, that's gonna take away from the integrity of that site, would not be right as stewards of that property. So, I guess I can't add any more to it, but we certainly have two strong letters from the National Park Service asking us to maintain that integrity.
So you'd be opposed to residential as well?
It's already residential.
Uh, residential, no. Somebody buys it.
No, it is zoned that way, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Are you opposed to residential?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions for me? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I see the site again as proposed? Please?
What's that?
Could I see the site again as proposed? What he had? As it comes down, as you look opposite the green and go across Lewis Boulevard, that's the entrance into the territory that goes on up to the guard and then swings down into Lewis, into the monument site. At the very bottom, where it curves again, that is where we have picnic tables and such. As you stretch on down Lewis Boulevard, that is all green space, down to the point. The city owns a good share of below the monument. You are running this, what I can't see is what he is going to do, because I drive that so often. The gully that you have to deal with there is drainage. If you, if you drive that and you see what the drop is in there, I cannot yet figure out how they are going to, without doing a lot of fill work, build something on down that way.
I'd like to respond first to Pete. Whether it's commercial or residential use, if it's residential, we're still gonna build garages that will exceed the 12 to 14 feet. And our, our buffer zone on the storage units will be farther away from 75 than our buffer zone for garages. The garages will, elevation will exceed 15 to 18 feet. We purposely created a nice green space at the entry, because our entry matches the monument. So we pulled all of our units down to the south, so we can conceal them and hide them, and create a nice area. I'm from Sioux City. I grew up in Morningside. I, I grew up going to the Hillcrest Center. I am not trying to change the integrity of the area. We've created a nice green space. We gave the ability to separate some green space to Tellco Triad. What we intend to do is create a nice finish, so it looks even nicer than what it did before I even purchased the property, which was just a giant hill with a cliff that you were looking at, that was silting away. In, in regards to your concerns about the drainage and the gully that we have, I've had a court order that we couldn't do anything over the last three years while it was under litigation. Now that that currently is being resolved, we'll create as nice an area and repair the gully, so we don't have that issues ever again. If I'm gonna build, uh, storage units on it or residential, that issue doesn't go away and needs to be resolved and approved through city, per city code, to maintain the water on the property for your 24 hours. So by taking away the opportunity to do the commercial and put the storage units on there, we know what we're creating. We're trying to create a bigger buffer zone. If you take that away from us, we'll end up doing a big concrete retaining wall, the fourplexes and garages on it. And I don't think that will appeal nearly to the story as what we've proposed here, especially with the improvements that we're doing on the entire property. Because I certainly don't think that we want storage units, because it's already zoned, G I. I'm sure we don't, you, nobody wants us to put storage units right up next to the entry. This way, we've created a nice concealed, hidden, nice property.
I, I have a concern with keeping it residential, especially if you put a couple fourplexes on there. Now you've got big, huge driveways that come out onto Business 75.
I don't think they can.
Yeah, I don't think they will either.
It would be a 75 limited access?
Correct.
Some areas at least it is. That's, that'd be my concern if it is resident.
I believe, Glenn?
We have a little bit of right-of-way.
We'd have to check with the DOT, but the DOT would have to approve any access on the Lewis Boulevard.
Well, then the DOT would have to buy his land.
There is access actually from, from the south, from Lincoln Way.
But not for the top parcel?
Old, old right-of-way, it's, it's undeveloped, but it, but it is there. There is access.
But the top parcel does not have that, does it?
Well, if the bottom parcel would, then in essence, the top parcel does as well.
So are we gonna build a street on that right-of-way for him?
We're gonna have to petition like anybody else.
And there it is, right there.
How much right-of-way is there? Do we know?
That's Business 75, dedicated. The address.
You know how much? Does the city have a right-of-way there?
Dedicated street.
No, I'm not talking about that road, but just off of 75.
It's sixty-some foot wide.
I believe it's 66.
66?
And then there's also an easement for the power lines that go through there.
Probably not a very good solution either, though, 'cause you're too close to Highway 75 already.
Right. You're right next to that intersection. I mean, it's some guy's driveway essentially now.
That's what it was.
Two guys' driveways.
You buy it already, Casey?
We have a purchase agreement signed. There should be a stoplight at that corner. We can't get it. This was the best viable solution that we come up with for this piece of property that created the largest green space that we could have.
And once you get the storage units in there, that's it, you're done? You're not gonna?
Correct.
The green space isn't gonna be turned into a house, or?
You couldn't develop that, it's a hill.
No.
Well, I'm just asking, so. I'm so, I, I'm really mixed, mixed on this. I totally agree with Pete, and I can see where you're coming from. It's, um, uh, you're investing a lot of money. My whole concern is just keeping the, the integrity of the monument?
I'd give anything, I wouldn't have any problem at all working with the historical society to help me and assist in having them put their investment into the look of the exterior facing the monument.
Well, and I, I can tell you that I, I'm working on something right now for the monument, to put lights up. So, you know, I, I mean, we want it nice, you know, we wanna improve it, and, uh, you know, we should be proud of the monument, and I don't wanna see anything, you know, make that go away, so.
Well, I really feel like the ability that they would have to work with me through the process of the design and the arc, uh, both on the landscape design and the building design that faces the monument, they'll have their input a lot more on that than they would be on my residential side.
For sure. Well, and, and I, I'm trying to think this all out here. I'm thinking that probably the storage units would be much better than having residential. You know, just because you're, once people use, get the storage in there, they're not gonna be running in and out. You know, residential, you're gonna, you're gonna have a lot more traffic.
Considerably.
So.
Go ahead.
You're going to be coming in? Access to all of these. Is going to have to come in here?
Correct.
You're gonna have an entrance here, or you're gonna have to go up and go clear around and go down? You're dead-ending down here.
Correct. We would have an entrance here and an exit here. We would, we would attempt to get people to come in here and then get them going or out the exit, so we use, utilize this exit over here, so we'd have a one-way situation, so we don't have people coming and going.
So you'd end up going out onto Glen?
Correct.
Because this is, this is getting to be unreal traffic-wise right now.
I agree.
It's, it's deadly, and as you come down here to Lincoln Way at seven o'clock at night, it's, again, it's a raceway.
Oh, I agree. I agree.
Have you bought it already, Casey?
Pardon?
Have you bought the ground already, or just opted it?
No, we have a signed purchase agreement with an deposit. Is it subject to rezoning? Yes.
And the zoning at present then would allow fourplexes and complexes across the street there?
I can, uh, excuse, I don't mean to interrupt, but to answer your question, I can tell you with a fa- for fact that whether you go through one way or the other, we're purchasing this property. And we're gonna go through with as much as we can up to that property. And we'll just leave a space open to get to residential.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I just, yeah, I, I know, I.
Can, can we pull that back up on the map, please? Yes. What we were talking about was our entry into the storage units is gonna be a one-way. Where our entry is here, we'll utilize the space coming in and out here. But to control our traffic exiting, it will come here with a gate here to pull the people out onto Glen Allen, or Glen Avenue to go east or west.
No, that's all right. I was just, I was just trying to figure out here. How much footage do you have coming down?
600 millennial feet.
Okay, so you're coming, um, you're coming about a third of the way down the green space below the monument, across from the monument, into the green space here.
Correct.
Because this goes on down to the point.
And then we'll have a retention area down in this area that will have shrubbery and vegetation around it.
Well, personally, the lesser of two evils would be, would be the storage units. If it is profitably buffered and if, if these will be trees and growing trees instead of, which is gonna be a problem with all of the fumes from the highway, to get green things to continue to grow along there.
And I would agree with the statement, that's why I moved it. The only other alternative is to ask what he's paid for it and offer him that. So, that's my opinion.
Don't thank you, anybody wants to know how much money I have invested in that property.
You know, cutting down the, the lower part of the property instead of, but what you purchased, you're hinging on this, right?
Quite frankly, if he develops it like this, could we not then vacate the right-of-way down there?
Because you are planning storage here, indoor storage in the green.
You're talk, are you talking about the street that goes from Lincoln Way?
Yes.
You're gonna have some.
There's one parcel there that their only frontage is on that street.
Oh, sure.
I can't see in my map where they're.
The trapezoid shape on there.
Yeah, you do, there was a property owner who spoke. The property owners that spoke to the south that speak to this issue. The property owners to the south raised, raised issues. They live there, they have access there. The, the issues they raised were drainage issues primarily, and also concerns about the storage units.
I don't know what his land value would be.
Are you comfortable? How do you define what you need for drain, for a storage pond, Glenn?
It's dictated with the amount of paving we have.
Yeah, I know, but I wanna know what he require, who he requires to decide, to get in the plan.
Well, we would look at the calculations, how much impervious area or the changes to the site. Look at the amount of runoff that would be anticipated based on the, the intensity of rain through there. And then he would have to size the pond. You know, it could either be wider or deeper, based on what's out there. In terms of the topography, and then look at what the runoff is today, and that'll dictate how large it'll be, so that he can not release more than what is there today.
But where's the storm sewer for this? It's gotta release somewhere.
It's gotta be to the south. I don't know exactly right now where the, the system.
My, my, my question is, I mean, I know all this has to be approved, but my question is, do we? You're all of a sudden taking a lot of bare ground, making it into concrete. Even if you have a detention pond, it's still, you have to have enough capacity to get it out of there in, in the old ravine part.
Right.
We don't need to add to it. We already have way more than what we need. Not, it's nothing to do with your project, but we're spending all kinds of money on these deals that we learned later we should have probably not let develop.
That's why we, on, on the entire plan, we're taking a considerable amount of space from Hillcrest and creating green space there.
Well, trees are not gonna, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying, but trees aren't gonna. Well, I don't, that's why, I mean, the pond has, first of all, be big enough in the, in the.
Well, it'll have, yeah, it has to large enough to contain the 100-year event. So that, you know, depending on how much impervious area there will end up being, that could be fairly large.
Potentially do the entire back part of the Hillcrest as porous concrete or, or, you know.
In terms of the, in terms of the runoff that will be allowed, you can only release the 10-year, what's allowed, what currently is the 10-year on the, the property as it sits today. So.
So only the parcels that are there?
So the vacant land now, the 10-year runoff quantity that is released today is the amount that he, the maximum amount he'd be able to release after it's developed. And then anything beyond that will have to be contained in the pond.
Understood. Still have to have a pipe to get it out of there.
Well, I mean, it'll have to, if, if there's no system currently in place, it'll have to discharge into where it's discharging currently, unless.
Well, that's, that's, my point is that that's not possible. He's got the pond down here and all the other water's running.
There's.
We would have to come in and make improvements to the system. We'd have to either improve whatever drainage way is there, or to pipe it.
Casey, do you have any drawings? I mean, your site plan's fine. Do you have any drawings of a, of a facility that you're gonna make this look like?
Well, after our current conversations, I'd like to get the historical, uh, the monument historical involved for the final sets of drawings. I didn't wanna spend an enormous amount of money on elevation designs. I do have some residential designs, but I don't think that will appeal to anybody.
You, you know, I, I really appreciate that, because I'm kinda not knowing what I wanna do here, you know? And if you will work with these guys. And I. Well, it's not gonna happen that way. So, you, you know, that's, that's the deal. There's, there's not even a discussion on that, 'cause we're not gonna, we're not, we're not buying the land from him. We can't afford to do that. So if we could have you guys visit with him and, and work something out that's gonna be good for all of us, I mean, that, that's the perfect plan. But he's working on. But he's working on all that, right?
Correct.
So I, I mean.
And we'll follow all of the city codes that.
I, I mean, this is what you need to talk to them about because they're all, he's working on it. You know, you think that he wants to have, have stories down there and have drainage problems? No, I don't think so. Well.
The, the original slope was about a 15%. We slowed it down to a 2% on my property from what it was originally before I bought it. As soon as we have the, as soon as we connect the pipe to the property above me, um, which will happen in the next 90 days per our lawsuit, um, it will resolve the majority of that.
You're going to have to do some fill in there before you can do anything. So you're going to have a ton of, literally going to have a ton of fill.
So, you know, I mean, he's going to be paying big bucks to make it right, to do, to do it all right. Because he doesn't want to have that headache looking at your monies.
I'm going to withdraw my second. Which means we don't have a second unless somebody wants to. I, I'm, I'm going to move that we defer this for two weeks because we're not meeting next week. Right? That's fine. Mine would die for a second. Doesn't matter.
Um, the next meeting date?
July 11.
July 11.
Which is two weeks.
I mean, the main concern is just finding out where our sewer infrastructure is to tie into for storm water drainage, so. Is that a problem, Jason? That's a big issue for me.
No, no, no. Sorry, I wasn't signed. I, I had a, had a completely different thought. It wasn't about, wasn't about here.
I'm just worried. No, I. We're setting this thing up for failure because we had a few issues with drainage here lately and I want to make sure that's addressed properly. And I want to know where the downstream pipe is, where the water is going to go. And I think, I don't think you have anything up there. I think it just naturally, because you changed the slope, probably drains before. I think it drained into Lewis Boulevard now.
It, it, I don't mean to interrupt, but it drained, it's drained actually exactly in the same place that it drained before, just farther away from.
Well, there's a lot of erosion and that's what concerns me is so we.
But we have that issue, whether it's commercial or.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but that doesn't, that, that we still, we still need to address that. So we know what we've got to have and if we've got anything downstream or not. I, I'm just concerned that. It's a long story, but we have, we have some issues in Ravine Park upstream and, and I don't want to create any more issues down there right now. So I'd move the deferral for two weeks and Glen, you and your staff in the next two weeks are going to have to give, I mean, I understand he's going to, it's his, he's driving the bus, but you've got to give us a plan and when he gets the water to you, what we're going to do with it. There a second to a two-week deferral?
I'll second.
And Casey, I just want to say that I, I don't, I don't object to anything that you're attempting or wanting to do at all. It's the idea of this national landmark to me and the importance of the historic integrity that's associated with it. I think it brings an awful lot of visitors to Sioux City, that whole Lewis and Clark Trail and up through where, uh, the Floyd Monument is and where Sergeant Charles Floyd died. And I, I just think the city has a responsibility to maintain the integrity and, and, and that's really important to me and it should be important to the city. But I certainly understand as a developer what you want to do. And if there's a way that, I don't know if the Historic Preservation Commission, I think you had a great offer there. I appreciate that. And I don't know if there's something that they can, they can convince me that we're maintaining the historic integrity.
Is the city interested in assisting in a design to, uh, help facilitate between the historic, myself and.
If it, if it costs money, probably, probably not because that's.
Well, we're going to be paying for design anyway. So if we can have all three parties involved with the design and make everybody happy.
Well, Chris, you'd be involved with it anyway, wouldn't you?
Correct. If the zoning is changed to, well, really either zone, we will still review a site plan. If it's zoned to GC, that would require conditional use permit. So the Board of Adjustment would also review that. Uh, but we do have the contact information from the state or the National Parks Service and the State Historic Preservation Office and our local historic commission. We would involve those in that review.
Okay. Casey, if you could, I don't know if it's possible. In the next two weeks, if you can get any that probably sit in a more non-commercial zone that you can get pictures of to give these guys and us some idea, that would probably be very helpful.
Okay.
I don't want you to spend any money designing, but.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Can I ask, uh, how much property does the city own south of the monument on the other side of the highway?
I don't know.
Quite a bit of it.
Yeah, we own most of it.
Okay, I'd be concerned about someone else applying for the same designation zone.
We own it, so.
I think we own it all the way.
We own it all the way because it's a wastewater treatment plant. There's like a house or something back in there though somewhere.
No, he's talking about the other side.
On the west side. He's talking about the west side of the street.
We own all that.
Right, all the way to Ravine Park.
Because if you open the zoning for this one, you may have to do it for someone.
No, we own it all the way down to Ravine Park. I mean, uh, whatever the creek is there, yeah.
The other thing, just as a reference point, that's publicly, that is, you own it, but I think also, if I remember correctly, when I was on plan zoning, plan zoning the first couple of months, that was, some of that was dedicated as prairie land back to the state. Um, but staff can check on that.
It's what?
It's dedicated as prairie land back to the state.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It can't be.
Can't be developed.
Call the roll, please.
Ready?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Stane?
I've written on this so much, I don't even know where I'm at now. Okay, 24 is a hearing and ordinance of ending several chapters entitled 25 of the municipal code to amend building design standards in certain districts. P&amp;Z recommends approval of these.
Said that we amend certain design standards, especially on larger buildings. Uh, we reviewed that and that was approved unanimously at the plan zoning level with no, no, no discussion, no objections or anything like that.
Does this one include the height of towers?
No, that's next.
That's next, okay.
Oh, great.
And you know what? This is my last thing as chair, so I'm not chair. Next time you'll see Susan Stewart here, but this is my last one.
Well, welcome to the jungle.
Well, I'm glad that we fixed this because some of our own buildings were in violation. So this is good that we, uh, made these amendments, right?
Correct. We made these amendments by what we were seeing come forward. Uh, our current code has differential between whether a building is over or under 10,000 square feet. If it's under 60% decorative material, if it was over, it was 75. Uh, we are requesting that be lower to 60% as well as a couple of other minor changes throughout the design standards ordinance.
Do you want to take you someone and read them tonight?
Sure.
I'm moving the item.
I'm doing it on the night tonight.
Don't think anybody heard you. Oh, you heard him?
Second.
Thanks. Second?
I just read her lips.
Are we voting now?
Yes. Finally.
Well, this.
I was just expecting this issue to go for a half hour too.
This one?
I moved, we waive the statutory rule unless somebody has a huge problem. Oh, you got to call the vote first. Okay, you're right.
No objection?
It broke?
I clicked on something I shouldn't have. I'm, it was, uh, five zero, all in favor.
Okay, I'm going to move the waive the statutory rule unless somebody has a favor, has a problem.
Did we have a second?
Yes.
Dan.
Dan did.
Sorry, didn't hear you that time, Dan, sorry. Scott?
Aye.
Capron?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Ready?
Aye. I'll move second, third.
Second.
Well, the last two weeks, I've not done you guys any good service here.
Are we in overtime? I think so.
Pass is five zero. 25 is a hearing and ordinance amending chapter 25.02 of the chapter and chapter 25.06 municipal code to require site plan approval for the city council by the city council wireless telecommunications towers. P&amp;Z recommends approval of this item with conditions. The conditions are that the council doesn't get to review it and that you've lowered the height from 200 to 150.
Yeah, there was a number, so there's a couple of pieces to this one. The, there's several pieces to it which staff can go through in detail, but there are some modifications that were, that we, that, uh, the staff came forward with based on their review of other communities and standards. We incorporate those. The only area of difference is that the staff recommended that the, that it be a site plan process, which then goes planning, zoning to council versus the way it currently is, which is a board of adjustment review. So that's the only distinction between what we recommended and what, um, and what staff brought forward to us and, and what's probably in front of you today.
And in most cities, is it board of adjustment or, or city council?
A high majority are board of adjustment. I've found one city in Iowa that does do city council approval through site plan.
There's what?
Cedar Falls. All the others that we researched as far as the large metropolitan area route.
But my problem is that we get blamed for them and we have no say in it and that really bothers me. And then they come here and we are the, we're, we're, we're the problem rather than part of the solution or the problem. Because we gave up our say. And if you want that. Well, I'm going to move that it stay, I'm going to amend this. We have a motion on this first. Authority be with the city council.
I'll second that.
I'm okay with the recommendation. Seems like the problem's in the residential zones. And you've told me before a good reason why we just don't outlaw them in residential zones, but I don't remember what that reason is. So I think, I think the board of adjustment do a great job. I think you have been on the tower sites. I think the one that came up, I just don't want to fix a problem because we had one that was kind of out in the wide open, if I recall. And, um, I just, it'll come to us, mayor, and, and we'll have the same, we'll wrestle with the same issues and I, I guess I'd rather be just, you know, no towers in residential zones. And let's just put an end to that kind of discussion because what residential zone is going to want a tower in their neighborhood? The one that we, that you approved was, wasn't that like 200 feet from the nearest?
That, that particular one was, um, yeah, it met exactly the setback requirements. Um, I will note there are a number of residential districts, um, including agriculture districts that, um, I don't want to say maybe are compatible with towers, but are better fits and not densely populated that, that could, that's why we, we don't want to go the route of banning residential districts altogether from having a cell.
Morning Side College would have been a perfect site, but they couldn't make a deal with Morning Side College. And so they go.
They don't want to pay them.
They don't want to pay them. So they go to the, to the, the site that has the least cost.
I agree.
And the board of adjustment is handicapped in what they can say is a requirement that can, that can not accept that. Nothing against what you're doing, but you're limited by Iowa law.
Well, I think we're all limited by Iowa law. It's not, it's not put on the board of adjustment only. Um, and we, and while we have, while we have criterion that we have to look through, some of that criterion is very fact-based and some of it's subjective. And so we looked at both in this site. I know that the most recent tower is what's driving this as part of that goes, but there was far more screening than we've seen in any other sites. And ultimately, it's your decision if you want that power back, if you want to, to push it, you know, to set us aside as far as the deciding body, that's your call. But it was a tough, it was, it wasn't easy for us either and it wasn't unanimous. So.
This was changed with the zoning ordinance, Street Right, anyway, was it not?
Yeah, because we are out.
Wasn't this the, really the first tower after that?
Yep. This is the first tower after that.
At like 100%.
So we are at first, this is the first tower after the zoning rewrite and basically what, what the zoning code pointed out and through that year and a half process pointed out that we're one of the rare ones who go through a city council site plan approval process rather than a board of adjustment process. And it's just.
Has everyone else paid somebody to come rewrite their zoning for?
Well, and it was a rezoning process previously, so we had an awkward circle zoning overlay district for towers, um, in the previous code, so.
But as far as what it comes down to as far as law, we can't ban it in residential areas. That was discussed at the planning and zoning level. We can't ban them in residential areas. You also can't bring up per state and federal law, other sites as a consideration. That's against state law. And you can't consider health consequences. It's a violation of federal law. So.
That's why we need to keep towers at 200 feet.
Yeah, so you can't, you can't say, well, they should go somewhere else. Well, you've got a nice lawsuit on your hands then because you can't consider that. And, and so you go down the line and you, you have to fairly, just fairly consider the site proposed. And that's, you know, that's what, that's what the board adjustment process is designed to do.
Well, the other part of the system, and it didn't work well, I will admit that, that, that we can be asked, we can, the council can ask you to reconsider.
Sure.
And I did that on the basis that the neighbors were going to hire a lawyer, they were going to get organized, they were going to do this, do that. I don't think they ever did that. And, but, but you never reheard it anyway.
Well, I, I can speak to.
They said nothing changed.
There's a couple of things you have to understand about the situation that we were in. It may not change your decision. But we were also had a four-week appeal process where the neighbors could take it to district court. So we, the board of adjustment was not going to be very vocal about anything in, with pending litigation, just like you guys aren't in significant discussions about closed session items. There's litigation pending. We don't want to, we don't for the good of the city. The second part of that equation is, is we did hold, we did take in more information in the second hearing. There are people who came up who stated additional, who stated the same sort of objections that had come before. There was greater attendance. The arguments were essentially the same. When we went through, and even the one who voted against said, listen, you haven't brought us anything brand new that points out something that we didn't already understand the first time we, we discussed this and heard this. Even though the meeting did probably last 30, 45 minutes of discussion, individuals coming up, wanting to speak and being heard. There just wasn't something substantially new that we had missed. We had heard the arguments and we'd understand and read the law that you couldn't consider other sites, you couldn't consider health, health as part of it, and you can't just ban them. You had to look at the site alone and whether or not it fit the law and fit the code as it was written. And that's where we came down, that we weren't going to rehear it, open up a new process and restart that four-week window all over again to rehear the same arguments we had heard the first time. They were very vocal in the first meeting and they represented their interests and there was really nothing new in the second meeting. And I know that was your goal. I understood that. But our, our, our standard was there had to be some substantial evidence presented that we had missed the first time. And that just wasn't, that, the board just didn't feel like that that was the case.
I just clarify also that the comments Jason made in regards to the state and federal laws on what we can and cannot ask a cell phone carrier or their representative as far as to go look at another site or to not look at the health concerns that may be tied to that. It not only impacts the board of adjustment, but also impacts the city council. It's not just a board of adjustment requirement. It's whoever has the deciding factor. In this case, if you switch it to the city council, those same standards would apply. It doesn't matter. We still have the right to vote no here every Monday based upon what we feel is in the best interest of the citizens of Sioux City. And cell tower companies, I'm, I don't care. You can report it. You can take it to their shareholders. They give very little about what they do in a community other than make money. That is their sole defining motive to come to a community. There is no other. There's no great humanitarianism going on in those companies right now. They are driven by one thing, number of cell phones they can have in their system. Nobody can sue me for that because it's the truth. And they don't care where they shove one of these towers. They proved it up on Maplewood and we turned that one down and the board of adjustment would have had no reason to turn that down. None whatsoever. And it was the wrong place. Red tower. Surprised they didn't reapply with the new.
And you can have, I mean, in theory, you could do a de facto ban, which is exactly what that walks you down the road, which is that. Well, it's allowed by code. It's allowed by code, but it's never going to pass.
Can these cell companies just plop, plop a tower down anywhere they feel like?
No, they can't. They can't. They, they, they can't now.
Like they can't?
No, they can't. They, I mean, staff did research on it. They can probably fill you in better than I can, but there's, in the existing code, there's a number of limitations that boxes them into certain sites that would be available and probable. And, uh, that's where, that's where part of this recommendation, part of what staff brought forward was their research on that and what that means.
And, and just to go off Jason's point that their decisions were based on facts, um, and. also some subjective items, the facts are in the code as far as what has to be met, and then as far as the interpretation items, neighborhood character can be, is a consideration that can be considered in decisions, so...
I, I understand, but Mr. Moore, and no disrespect, but not everybody can afford an attorney to fight these things in district court. And that's, that's the option after board of adjustment. That's the bothersome part for me, is that we're asking neighborhoods and, that may not have a lot of money, to go fight these things in district court, because we're willing to give up at least to have some say in that, and I'm not willing to do that. The rest of you can vote me down 4 to 1, and I'm okay with that. I don't, I mean, I learned a long time ago, especially at this late hour, the sooner we vote, the better as far as I'm concerned, but that's where I'm at, so...
And I don't disagree with your comments. I, I just, part of the reason why I voted for reconsideration is because they said they were going to hire a lawyer, that they didn't have enough notice, they weren't prepared, and they were gonna present new evidence to the board of adjustment. I was all for that. But, you know, if they come to the city council and, and you talk about vote no and not have a finding of fact why we're voting no. Now, whether that's appealable to the district court, that'll be the tower, that's the tower company's problem, I guess. But it doesn't seem right. I'd like to have a finding of fact as to why we're voting something up or down, especially if it does get appealed to the district court, but...
But I don't ask you guys, not one of you do I vote, do I ask, why'd you vote no on something? That's not my business.
Well, no, but we usually, but, but we can state what those findings would be.
Right, and you can have the right to do that.
Yeah.
In one of these deals.
I just think the board of adjustment's doing their job, and, I mean, I will say they're doing such a good job, you actually keep the politics out of it, and maybe that's what we're talking about here, is let's bring the politics back into making that decision.
Well, you know, the community needs that more say.
You can't do that, you don't wanna do that.
I, I just think part, this is a key decision for a neighborhood. And quite frankly, if the neighbors don't have the right to petition to their council and get results, I, I just think that's wrong.
Well, you know what? The council's here to, to protect our citizens and to listen to their concerns, and I, and I, I have to agree with Bob. I'm, you know, that's part of what we do, you know, so...
But the council also delegates some of that authority by making appointments to boards and commissions, and if you don't do your job, we let you know that. It's just a difference, I mean, I, I respect your opinions on that, we just have a differing opinion, and I think the residents are well represented by both council and by board of adjustment, quite frankly.
And you know, how, how many times have, have we really had the board adjustments come back to, you know, come back to us?
Well, you approve our minutes, you, you, you know, you acknowledge our decisions every time we have a board of adjustment meeting, so you see what we do on a regular basis, and really this is the first time that there's really been any significant conflict on a decision we made. And the people on that board, whatever decision you make today is fine, but the people on that board are good people who care about the community too. We listen extensively to every concern, even if we don't agree that the decision they want us to do is the one that's working.
And no bearing on it, that has no bearing for me. We have a different set of criteria we can operate under than you do. That's my point. You're, you're, you have a different criteria when you vote than what I have to have. It's, my standard is lower than yours. It is.
It's, every member, every, just like on the city council, every member of the board of adjustment has the right to vote according to what they feel based on the standards. For instance, standard two...
Exactly.
Is just like, does it, does it affect the character of the neighborhood? Well, that's an easy subjective standard. It's easy finding a fact that somebody could say, I don't agree, that it doesn't affect us. It could go both, either, either way.
Exactly.
So, on a key decision...
At the board of adjustment level, it can go either way.
Your, your board of adjustment is nominated by council.
Yep.
Through a simple majority vote, and typically there's little competition for the open positions. The city council's, you know, held accountable by the electorate every four years, so, you know, what does a citizen have more say with on this issue? That's, that's where I'm at, you know, it's, it's about, when you make that decision to run for council, I mean, these are the kind of decisions that, in my opinion, are key decisions and not, they should not be delegated.
As long as you're not setting us up for a failure, Keith, because when the residents come and we don't, and we don't support them, and we vote for the tower, we're sending a clear message, well, I want your vote because I want a second term. I, I really want you to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start making decisions based on campaigning for a second term.
No, no, your decision is best, what's best for all of Sioux City, and if you can make that case to the people in the room, I mean, like our case today with all these signatures. I mean, we basically had to tell them that...
I don't need to make the case, I can vote yes or no. I don't need to make any case.
But it's the same thing, you're held accountable to these people still.
I just have seen the board of adjustment, planning, zoning in action, you hear, you hear our public better than anybody, really. The public gets to be here, I've never had one citizen come up to me saying, we got cut off at P&amp;Z, we got cut off at board of adjustment. You hear everybody out, you don't interrupt anybody, and you let them have their day. We, even on the reconsideration, even though you didn't take it up formally, you spent 30 to 45 minutes hearing the same thing again. I just think you're doing your job. I, I think it's just a difference in philosophy, and I don't, I don't have a problem either way, Keith, I just, I just wanna kinda stand up for what, they're doing their job, and I wanna stand up for them because they're doing it well.
Again, it's like those people sitting out there, I'm not, I didn't have any issue with them, I don't have any issue that they're not doing their job. Quite frankly, I'd ban them in every neighborhood. It's that simple for me. I'd ban them in every neighborhood. Nobody should have to have one of these if any kind of resistance comes in their neighborhood.
Sorry.
Now, you're talking, I mean, I, I...
And that was raised, you, that, that was absolutely raised in the discussion, but we cannot, but you can't do it and not expose yourself to, and not expose yourself legally. You just can't. You can't ban it. No one's banning residential cellphone towers, even if they have strong restrictions. That's kind of what, where our recommendation comes down, is have the restrictions you want in the code, but we can't do an outright ban on residential areas. We did talk about it, but we, as, as I understand it, as it explained to me, we can't.
It's 7:30, and this has gone on long enough.
What on the amendment?
I, I've called for the question.
Listen on the amendment, and I wanna make a second amendment, yeah?
All right, so what do we vote on?
To clarify, the...
This is to give the council decision.
Believe is what you want.
Yeah.
Which is, the original request from staff is what you're asking for, so I don't believe there's no amendment.
Okay.
That needs to be included. I think if you make a motion to approve, if that's what, the route you want to go...
Oh, okay.
Motion should stay the same as what's on the agenda. So, the, the motion that's originally on the agenda, does that include shortening the towers?
Yes.
It includes everything. Well, I would, I would keep the towers at the 200 feet myself.
If then you do have, um, withdraw our other motion because it's immaterial, then you'd have to move that.
Is that correct or not?
Yeah, the 150-foot height in residential areas was in, has been in from the beginning, and the, and the planning and zoning commission kept that in as well.
Okay, is that, I feel there is a big safety concern for cellphone towers, and the higher you get them up, the less concern there is. So, I would move to amend that.
Okay, so, well, here, here's my other question then. So, if, if, if the final decision does come down on the council, and it's gonna be illegal if we don't wanna have, have the tower in a, in a residential area, what's the deal? I mean, it's not gonna count anyway, right?
I, I'm, I'm not sure I followed the question.
People still have, if there's no objection, they can still get a tower. That's, and if there's maybe one objection, they'd still get the tower, it's just, one entire neighborhood objects.
Ultimately, it's gonna come down to the council that's hearing the issue, whether it's you or future council, you know, it's their, gonna be their decision as to whether or not the cellphone tower gets approved, if it meets all the other criteria.
So, if we don't want it in a residential area, and we vote no, we don't want it in a residential area, well, where's all these laws coming in then? You said Iowa...
Well, what he's referring to is doing it written in our code, that you can't, that cell towers are prohibited in residential districts. You can deny a cell tower in a residential district based on the criteria of neighborhood character, which is, is a lot, is, has been known and used in other, you know, across the country as a, a means to deny a tower.
All right, let me see it.
Illegal term.
Keep here. Got it.
So, one of the criteria, could we actually have a criteria that would say that you have to have a supermajority or 60% or more of the residents within so many feet to approve the tower before they can even present it?
I'm not sure if we'd wanna go down that route. Usually, in, in the case of these items, we rarely hear from those that are in support of it. Those that are in support of it normally don't participate in any of the meetings or provide us any input, so it, it would just add another step for us to go out and actually canvas the support.
Exactly.
All right.
And Keith, on your amendment regarding the height, just to clarify, we're actually proposing to reduce that to 200. Yeah, I want it to stay at the 200.
Why?
Because they're microwave towers, and there's a clear connection between microwave communications and cancer. And the closer to the ground there is, they are, the more of a threat there is, especially in a hilly area like our own. And cancer rates in this area are already higher than a lot of the, yeah, exactly, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Do we gotta go up 200 feet?
Go 300 feet.
Yeah.
Is there a second to that? I think I did, did I not?
Not on the 200 foot.
I will second that, I really would like to... Yeah, move on tonight.
I should've worn sneakers today.
Yes, really. Did you wear your high heels? It's over.
Damn, wants us in every finding of fact.
I want that in as a finding of fact from the mayor. Turn up my contract.
Okay, the way that it's written for, for clarification, and Jeff, you may have to help me here, but it looks like 150 feet in NC, RRS, RGR, and UAR, and 200 feet in all of their districts. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, and I believe Keith's proposal and motion and seconded by the mayor was to remove our 150 feet. 150 reduction and put it back to the 200. So, essentially, he's approving, making a motion to approve the tax amendment without the 150-foot reduction.
Okay.
Please call the rule.
I can't wait to read tomorrow what we did today.
Yeah, Ian's got his work cut out for him. Hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
No.
Braddick?
Hi. I'll move the motion as amended.
We already did that, I believe, did we? I did.
Uh, no, we did not.
Yeah, I did, but that's, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
This is what it feels like to be on the 114.
It was moved in second, it wasn't, it was moved in second, that's how we started.
Jason, I tried.
What's that?
I tried.
Oh, new, oh, please, I knew I was coming into a losing battle on this one.
I'll go ahead and call the question on the vote on that.
But... Gotta do your job.
You do it well, too.
I'm glad, I'm glad to take a break. Susan Stewart will be the next chair, and you'll be, she'll be happy to help you guys out.
That's the board in good hands.
She does a fine job, by the way.
She does, and she's retired, so she's got more time, so...
Waiting for one vote.
Whoops, must be me.
There we go.
Passes 4 to 1, Mr. Moore votes no. We're not gonna ask you to waive the rules, we're gonna go on to 26, a resolution adopting plans, specifications, former contract, estimated cost for the North Ramp paving rehabilitation project, Sioux Gateway Airport, I'll move it.
Second.
Jason, you have to leave.
Glad to leave.
Stick around for breakfast.
Passes 5, 0, 27's resolution authorizing final payment to Mark Albonicious for the elevation of wellheads of Riverfront Project Well 6 deferred from June 20th, 2016, I'll move it.
Second. I feel sorry for the council member that has council concerns today.
You will. Trust me.
Not to give you a warning, Pete, but just to...
Well, it won't, it won't bother me any. Passes 5, 0, citizen concerns. Anybody that waited this long deserves a medal and a gift certificate from the city manager.
Maybe I'll have a concern.
I'm sure no one has any council concerns, but we'll go quickly in case you do.
Okay, quickly. I just wanna share that I received a phone call, oh, I guess from Sandy last week, to call a lady about the swimming pools. She had some concerns about closing the pools, and her concerns in part were for potential failure of Leif Erickson and not having an aquatics park, you know, even begin to be funded for three years. And would there be, with two pools, then if we take the two out? The only reason I wanna tell you that is because I did encourage her, because I believe the timeline was, and I know Matt's not here, the timeline was to try to get the bid for demolition in, in the summer, so they could start in the fall to build the next year, so... I, I just want you to expect probably that topic may come up. She was talking about putting a group together and coming to council. I encouraged her to do that and, and to do it in a timely manner. And then this afternoon, I received another call from an individual who wants to talk about swimming pools too, so I don't know where they're headed, don't know where they've been for the last year and a half, but, well, I just wanted you to know it, so you're not caught off guard when they come.
I'm done.
Did you take a break during the meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. You did?
I did, I was quick.
Some of us didn't, so roll ahead.
I have to stay.
Matt's not here yet, but do you, Bob, do you know where we are with the painting and seating at Long Lines?
Yeah, that's right.
Pay, if you remember when that was voted down, we took a step backward, and it'll be coming back as part of the CIP for any possible changes.
Oh, we're gonna wait till then.
Yep, I believe so, because we don't have enough money to do upgrade it.
Well, the same thing I asked.
I'll verify that, but I think that's back to where we're at now.
I think we should probably know what we're gonna do with it first. I mean, if you wanna propose giving it to E Fab, then it's maybe...
I didn't hear what you said.
Different funding sources and...
What was your, the seating at Long Lines?
Oh, yes.
Where we were with that.
Yeah, I, I asked him before the meeting.
Okay.
Hunter, what do you have?
Nothing.
Oh.
I'm outta here.
You're done?
I just have more acronym names ready for Mark.
Give them to him, Matt. I'm moving adjourned.
Outta here.
Second, hi.
Capron?
Hi.
Greckin?
Hi.
Moore?
Hi.
Braddick?
Hi.
Scott?
Thanks, everybody.
Glenn?
This went so long, I didn't have time to cash a check.
Thanks for hanging out, guys.